Can I just take your seats, please? Let's call this meeting to order the Champaign County Board Committee of the Hall for Elock Highway and County Facilities. It's Tuesday, February 7th, 2012. The time is 6:05. Please turn off your cell phones. Roll call, please.
Here. Carter.
Here.
Coward.
From.
Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here.
Langenhagen.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGesse.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Moser. O'Connor. Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
LaSalle.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Allen.
Allens.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bensel.
Bergson.
Here.
Twivel.
Here. We have a forum. Seek approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Hall for January 10th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rizal, second by Mr. James. Discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Seek approval of the agenda. With Mr. Langenhagen, second by Mr. Carter. Any changes? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. Okay, we have quite the stack tonight. Review of the rules here quick. We have one hour total for everybody. Each person has a maximum of five minutes. And there's no interaction between the board and the speaker. That is, you cannot ask questions or anything like that. So first one up is Brian Dolinar.
Good evening. My name's Brian Dolinar. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana. And I just wanted to talk about a few fine points for the County Board Facilities Committee tonight to consider. One, I think, important distinction to make and will be important for this committee that's being proposed tonight for your consideration, or what is it being called now? Not a committee, but a project team or some, something else. One important consideration is the distinction between minimum security and maximum security. Okay? The important distinction. Everybody currently in both the jails is maximum security. And there's no distinction so that murderers and rapists are thrown in with people who are in for a suspended license or a domestic DUI. If there's some attention given to minimum security, folks, it will significantly reduce the costs of whatever is proposed. People who are in for minimum security don't require the same kinds of high-technology surveillance and the like. So this is one important point, I think, for folks to consider. I saw also that there's some attention to examining the more general questions of the criminal justice system, which were proposed for the Justice Committee. While I think it should be discussed there, and some folks are discussing it already. I think it's important to, who ends up in the county jail and those population numbers in the jail when you consider what are folks in for? And there's a number of people, I believe, who are in the jail who don't need to be there. These are people who are in for a high bond. I just talked to a guy over the weekend. He was a plumber. He was put in jail for a domestic case. He sat in there for five days on a $25,000 bond. He couldn't raise $2,500. It took him five days to do so. This is a guy who's got a job. He's got a family. He doesn't need to be sitting in there for five days. The NIC report initially done in these discussions pointed out that 20% of the jail population in there is in there for traffic offenses. People obviously do not need to be spending that kind of time in there. Twenty, one-fifth of the population on traffic offenses. Thirdly, the Sheriff Walsh continues to support the Secure Communities Program to incarcerate immigrant, people in our immigrant community here and hold them for Immigration Customs Enforcement to show up. Continuing to support the program. These are, you know, these are fathers, these are mothers, who we believe don't need to be sitting in there for extenuated periods of time. We've talked to people who have spent anywhere from five to, five days to three months because they're being held under the Secure Communities Program. Sometimes waiting for ice. Sometimes they're afraid to post bond because if they post bond, then ice might show up to pick them up. So there's several instances where people are sitting in the jail that I believe don't need to be sitting in there. And if you examine those numbers, then you don't have to build the beds to house them. Another, you know, and another argument that keeps getting played as well is that there are state and federal mandatory minimums requiring that the state's attorney just hand out sentences according to state guidelines. Now, some of this is true, but 90% of the cases that run through the courthouse are plea bargained out. Okay? So the state's attorney is entirely in her discretion, wherever she is, that she, entirely in her discretion, that she decide who, you know, when she's going to enforce these state mandatory minimums and when she's going to opt for lesser punishments. You know, I would say that, for example, five years for retail theft is too much. Okay? These are heavy-handed sentences. Okay? And they're DUI sentences that are also egregious and are running up the population of people who are sitting in there waiting to go on to the state. These are negotiable, the, in the plea bargaining process and sending people over to the jail that don't need to be in there.
Right, your time's up.
Okay. Lastly, I'd like to remind folks that if we're concerned about deaths in the county jails, there have been deaths in both the satellite and the downtown jails. We want no deaths. We want all people to be safe while they're in the county jails. Thank you.
Next up is, I'm gonna mispronounce his first name. Julia, Juliana Panagakis? See how close I was.
Hi, I'm Julienne Panagakis. I live at 1403 South B.C. Avenue in Urbana. And I was here last week at the County Board meeting. And I was riding home thinking to myself that I feel like I've been to so many of these. I feel like I've been to so many County Board meetings and School Board meetings and all different kinds of local, meetings of local democracy. And I kept asking myself why I continue to come back to them when I find them somewhat tedious and somewhat boring and I asked myself what I'm doing here. And the answer that I continued to come up is that, come up with is that this is one of the best places that we can see democracy happening in the world that we live in. And there's not really an option not to for people that are committed to advocating for social justice. And so this is a forum that we have. And I think that there's a lot of similarities with why I am here again this week and why all of you are here because you care about the society that we live in and want to make it a better place and feel that you have a role in serving that. And so a couple of points that I want to bring up about this proposal is that, from my understanding, what was presented last week is that there's this proposal for a new jail, though there's not, there hasn't been studied, there's not a demonstrated need for it. When people are considering building a school, when I've been to other board meetings in other towns, when you look at the demographics, and if the demographics reflect that there is a population growth, then you consider building a school. And I think the same is true with a jail. And the demographics that have been demonstrated don't indicate that the population is going up. And so I think that there are two issues that are being confounded into, into this one committee and given the responsibility, which is, is there a need for the jail? But that's not what you're being asked. It's being asked, are we going to fund it? And so I want to, I want to bring that up. And I want the Board to be able to think about that as, is there, is there a need for this? And I did hear a couple of people last week talking about different kinds of alternatives that there are for meeting the needs that have been demonstrated for an aging building. And so I encourage you all to continue to look into that. And the last thing I'd like to bring up is the issue of who determines these needs. And this small committee, it seems like, has been assembled. And is that committee representative of everyone in Champaign County? And when I look at it, my answer is no, it's not. And so how can, how can we do that better? And I don't think that question is just for the Justice Committee. I think that is a question for all of us. Everyone who's on this board and everyone who lives here to be continually asking ourselves, how can we, how can we better be doing democracy? And deciding to spend $20 million to build a new jail, and that decision being concentrated in a small group of people who already have a lot of concentrated power in, in society, seems, seems wrong to me. So I wanted to leave you with those thoughts. I'll let other people speak. Thanks.
Next is Harold Charlo.
Hello, my name is Harold Charlo. I live at 3610 North Lincoln Avenue in Urbana. And I went to the caucuses today and handed out a pamphlet about the proposed roundabout that the city of Urbana wants to put on Lincoln Avenue and Olympian Drive. I believe, and I think Jeff Blue's gonna give a presentation later, and you might ask him, but somebody asked me, is this in the plans that have gone to the state? And I believe they are. So it will be the plan that if the state approves it, that we will have a roundabout out there. And I just think it's a gigantic waste of, of the taxpayers' money, even though no local money is going into Olympian Drive. It's a waste of our taxpayers' money. The, the whole concept of this was to try to develop industry in the Lincoln Avenue area. Roundabouts, even though they say they're safe and so forth, I've been to Europe several times. Roundabouts are not made for 53-foot semis. They're made for smaller vehicles. In this drawing, if you see it, it's very nice drawing, but it's not a practical drawing of what's going to occur up there. This shows a four-lane highway. Right now, as proposed, the east leg will not be there. So it'll only be a three-lane road. And the two side roads will only be oil and chip roads. So you're gonna have one two-lane highway coming in from the west into the roundabout, oil and chip road going north and south. Your truck traffic going, trying to get across the railroad tracks is gonna have to make a 270-degree turn around the roundabout to make a simple 90-degree turn that's required at a standard intersection. And if you leave Lincoln Avenue alone, all you need is a stop sign on Olympian Drive because you can't go straight. You either have to turn left or you have to turn right. And so a person coming across who wants to go north on Lincoln Avenue, again, has to make a 270-degree turn when, with a normal stop sign, they have to make a 90-degree turn. And the, and like I said, a 53-foot semi will block that entire intersection. There will be no traffic flow at all because he will block the whole intersection trying to get on the road and then getting far enough to the inside to get back out of it. And one last point is snow removal. If you've ever been up in North Lincoln Avenue, you know we get heavy winds and snow. This roundabout will block the wind. And you will have snow accumulated across the entire area. What does the snow removal people do? Pleasantly, they just go right through an intersection. They plow it both ways and they clear it. What are they gonna do to the snow that they have to continually build up in the center of the roundabout to get it out of there? Because it's just gonna build up every time you plow it. So I hope, as I understand it, that the County Board has the authority. You signed an intergovernmental agreement, but you have a 90-day to get out of it. And I would hope that the County Board sees the impracticality of this and puts Urbana on notice that unless they get this out of there and get a standard intersection, that you will pull your approval. Thank you very much.
Next is Mikhail Labansky.
Good evening. My name is Mikhail Labansky. I live at 2104 Cureson Drive in Urbana. I teach in the Psychology Department. And I also, for the last few years, have been teaching and writing about restorative practices or restorative justice. One of the things I do, this is in the context of the county jail. One of the things I do when I talk about restorative justice is I ask different groups to come up with their ideal justice system. And I do this, I've done this in conservative circles and in progressive circles and libertarian circles. And by and large, the ideal justice system that people come up with looks pretty much the same. We all want the same thing. I want to recognize that we all want the same thing. We want a community that's safe. We want a community in which everybody's treated fairly. We want a community where those who are charged, accused, sentenced have outcomes that are in their best interest as well as the community's best interest. We want them to, to do better following whatever accountability there is to the community. We want them to be better as a result of that accountability than they were before that accountability. Jails are a strategy. They're just one possible strategy. And they're not the only strategy. And, and I would argue that we have a lot of data that tells us that it's by far not the best strategy to get those kind of outcomes. So I asked the Board to consider or create the opportunity to consider, really consider, not just, you know, go through the motions, but to really consider the possibilities of alternatives, of restorative justice alternatives, of mental health court alternatives, of various other alternatives that exist across the country that have demonstrative outcomes that do better than jails. Thank you.
Peter Campbell.
My name is Peter Campbell. I'm a PhD candidate and teaching assistant in Communication and Gender and Women's Studies at the university. I'm also a volunteer tutor in the Danville Correctional Center. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Solidarity Committee of the Graduate Employees Organization, Illinois Federation of Teachers Local 6300, to join all of the other voices today in opposition to the proposed jail expansion. I want to echo what has already been said and what will be said, that the best way to address problems related to incarceration in our community, including overcrowded jails, is to support the municipal and community initiatives that reduce incarceration. If our solution is to make more space for more prisoners, then we'll only be making the problem worse. But today, I want to specifically address a claim made last week by some members of the County Board and others, that expanding the satellite jail is a human rights concern because of the poor conditions that, in particular, women and vulnerable population prisoners face in the current downtown facility. If women prisoners are facing poor conditions, it is because of the completely wrong-headed approach to incarceration that has been taken by the very people urging that we expand the satellite facility. There's just no reason for us to believe that anyone will be treated better at a different facility run by the same folks who admit to treating inmates so poorly right now. We all know that conditions in the downtown jail are bad. If the sheriff's office is so concerned with these conditions, why haven't they been working to alleviate them already in more direct ways? We know that more room exists at the satellite facility now. I think, and I believe others do as well, and there's evidence for this, that the expansion proposal is not about reducing overcrowding, but giving, especially given the sheriff's commitment to the Secure Communities Program, the county an opportunity to sell bed space to state and federal clients. The best way to improve conditions in an overcrowded facility is to reduce the number of people who are locked up. In fact, the evidence is overwhelming that prisoners in the United States generally, particularly women, tend to face poor conditions because of their treatment at the hands of prison administration. Study after study shows that poor conditions, especially for women prisoners, are not just a problem with overcrowding. Research also shows that expanding jails does not help with overcrowding. Expanded facilities are just filled with even more prisoners. This means that if the satellite expansion goes ahead, we'll be switching a smaller overcrowded facility for a larger overcrowded facility. I guarantee that if the human rights of women prisoners and other prisoners and all prisoners are being violated in the downtown facility, and in my limited experience with jails, I have no doubt that they are, that they will continue to be violated in any other facility that they are sent to. This is an obvious point because, again, the same people who will be ultimately responsible for the newly expanded facility, and these people will be responsible for the satellite facility as well. Conditions in prisons and jails are terrible for women and vulnerable populations, period. Expanding our jail space will only increase the number of people, most of whom will continue to be locked up for nonviolent offenses, facing these poor conditions. Jail and prison is a bad place. Let's work together as a community to keep people out of it. To argue that we should expand a jail in order to treat prisoners better is perverse. Any public official who makes this argument is trading on the lives of the most vulnerable in our community, I believe, for their own political gain. Thank you.
Chris Evans.
I'm Chris Evans, resident of Champaign County, and I'm in District 8. Well, so much to say in so little time. Where to start? Well, in all seriousness, we know the county, the downtown is in disrepair. How'd that happen? Government buildings normally don't go to rot in 30 years, but okay. We do want officers to be safe. We want the inmates to be treated well in getting back on the road to whatever recovery needs to be done. And we want, actually, probably more money to be spent on the criminal justice system. I'm an advocate, so I want you to hear that. But what we do have here is failure to communicate. A little history. Back in 1996, when my representative Ralph Langenhagen was 24-years-old, we built a new jail for 182 people for $11 million. And then the next year, we put a referendum on the vote to the county, the entire county, all the voters, for a quarter-cent sales tax. And the voters said no. So the next year, as you know, we put up another vote, and this, and we had a referendum. And the voters said yes to the following. We'll pass a quarter-cent sales tax and we'll pay $9 million for the outstanding debt on the satellite jail. We'll pay for $19 million for constructing new courtrooms. We'll pay about $3.5 to $4 million for a youth detention center. We'll get a $1.5 million annual budget for technological projects and improvements for all public safety facilities. Can we get a teleprompter for this? All right, all right. Anyway, so, and I think it was an undisclosed amount of, for sheriff's deputies and an undisclosed amount for youth education. All totaling about $32 million of criminal justice stuff. Now, the ordinance in 1998 to the voters, what the voters voted on, said something very interesting at the bottom page. It said that, it's right here. This law stuff is pretty complicated. It said, "Now therefore be it resolved that upon payment in full of the costs of construction of new facilities for the Champaign County Youth Detention Center and Champaign County Courthouse and the repayment in full of the outstanding obligations on the existing bonds issued to fund construction of the Champaign County jail, this tax shall be repealed unless its continuation is approved by a majority of the voters of Champaign County in a subsequent election." That's what the voters voted yes to in 1998. Now, you'll notice that it doesn't say anything about a $6.8 million construction project of tearing down the old tower and tuck pointing the old courthouse in August of 2007. And it sure doesn't say anything about building a $20 million jail now. All that to say is the quarter-cent sales tax needs to be brought back to the voters. Any more building on the quarter-cent sales tax has to be a county-wide referendum according to what we voted on in 1998. It said the tax would be repealed as soon as that stuff got done. And it didn't say, it says nowhere here about a $6.8 million construction project on the old courthouse. And it certainly doesn't say nothing about any new construction. So there's that on the financing.
You're out of time, Mr. Evans.
See you next week. Thanks a lot for listening.
Rebecca Ginsburg.
Good evening and thank you for your time and your service. My name is Rebecca Ginsburg, and I live in Urbana. And I'm on the faculty at the University of Illinois. I'm disturbed by the assumption that jails are effective in reducing crime. If jails and prison were effective in reducing crime, we wouldn't have a 51% recidivism rate in Illinois. I'm a historian, and I think a historical perspective is useful here. Incarcerating people as punishment for crime is a relatively recent development within Western societies. Previous to that, communities responded to crimes with a range of other approaches, including corporal punishment, banishment, capital punishment, and indentured servitude. Incarceration has some advantages over those approaches, but it also has some weaknesses. For that reason, communities across the United States, indeed across the world, are moving away from building prisons and jails and starting to respond to crime and violence in other ways that are ultimately more cost-effective and more supportive of public safety. What are the weaknesses? What are the drawbacks of incarceration? The main problem is not that incarceration doesn't cure anything. The main problem with incarceration is that it creates problems. Among the problems that it creates relate to the challenges and costs of reentry following incarceration and the social and economic costs to families who lose a member to incarceration. Any study that you are anticipating to examine the needs and impacts of new jail construction should include a study of such costs. I believe that such a study will demonstrate that expanding jails is an expensive option. I urge the Board to consider more cost-effective, long-sighted solutions. And top among these are the multiple programs that have been proven to reduce violence and increase public safety through prevention. Thank you.
Fairchild Ruggles.
I'm Dee Fairchild Ruggles. I'm a resident of Urbana and a professor at the U of I. And I'm going to add my voice to what so far seems like a unanimous call from the community to reconsider the jail issue. And I'd like to address both the process that I think is flawed, and I'd also like to make some comments about jails and this jail in particular. I understand that the County Board has convened a committee, a project planning team, to start planning the jail. But before approving that committee, I ask you to look carefully at its composition. First, it is led by the sheriff, who is already a vocal proponent of jail expansion. And second, the proposed members are all white. An all-white committee making decisions about expanding the county's ability to lock up people, more than half of whom will be African-American, judging from current statistics. There's something seriously wrong with those ratios. A prison population that is disproportionate to the racial demographics of the county as a whole. And a proposed jail planning committee whose racial composition is also disproportionate, disproportionate to Champaign County and outrageously disproportionate to the racial composition of the anticipated jail residents. That's an easy one to fix. So before you go any further, I ask you to change the constitution of the committee to include prominent members of the Black to include prominent members of the black community, and you know who they are, because some of them took the time and trouble to address you here at the county board meeting just last week. And they were very persuasive, I thought, because I was here and I heard them. Once a more representative committee has been assembled, it needs to consider the idea of public safety in its entirety. Public safety is not simply a matter of locking up people who break the law. Public safety is about prevention and providing for the basic needs of the citizenry. And this applies especially to those with mental health and substance abuse problems, and we heard about that last week. Improving mental health services in the jail is useful, but if the board is really serious about addressing these issues and reducing incarceration, they will need to also support community-based programs and facilities. Better way to spend our money, I think. We all know that large numbers of people in the jail have mental health issues, but our central question should not be how to expand the jail to house them all, but rather, how to reduce those numbers by providing better preventative services in the community. Increasingly, states are closing prisons, developing local jail diversion programs, these are much cheaper, by the way, and looking at smart ways to ensure public safety, solutions that don't focus on putting people behind bars, which I hope someday will go the way of public flogging and decapitation in public. I mean, someday we'll look at this as a historical artifact and think, why did we ever think that we could cage human beings? And, well, so to summarize, I urge the board to look first at the racial composition of the proposed committee, and to include members of the community, particularly the black community. And second, I urge the board to consider ways to spend the public safety tax funds on non-incarcerating options, instead of allowing a new jail to swallow all of the available funds. Thank you.
Kelly Dillard.
Good evening. My name's Kelly Dillard. I'm the owner of Diggett of Champaign. I'm located at seven hundred County Road twenty-one seventy-five North, Champaign. This is also the place of my residence. Thank you for the opportunity to address this board tonight. I'm here because of a proposed amendment that I believe each of you have a copy of from our county zoning department. This amendment is being made to directly affect my property and my property in particular. I believe that any law, whether it, that affects only one citizen, for good or bad, is just bad government. This is no small text amendment. It is a far-reaching and crippling to many businesses in Champaign County at a time when we need less regulation instead of more. Regulation seven-point-one-point-two-E is very clear that it only regulates non-farm second-division vehicles. John Hall does not like that. He wants to regulate more. He wants to regulate farm equipment, heavy equipment, trailers, and any other commercial equipment. So he says it's too hard to understand it as it is. He has stated in literature to the public, in ZBA meetings, and even in the documents that he gave to each of you for tonight's meeting, several things that are out of context and just plain misleading. He stated that the ZBA upheld his interpretation of seven-point-one-two-E that is just, that is just not so. They, what they did was to choose not to give him a vote of no confidence. The board also did not agree that the ordinance was poorly written. On line thirty-two, page twenty-five of the July seventh, two thousand and eleven ZBA minutes, Mr. Schroeder stated that the ordinance is pretty clear-cut. On the first page of your information, he says that the Illinois Vehicle Code specifies that any first-division vehicle modified for use in a business is a second-division vehicle. That's just wrong. What it states is a first-division vehicle modified and used as a second-division vehicle is a second-division vehicle. On the second page, he states that there is no weight limit in the existing ordinance. It doesn't need a weight limit. This is not John Hall's job. Weight limits are regulated by each road authority wherever you're at. Page two, item three, says there's no limit on equipment, when in fact, it is limited in paragraph four and six of his amendments, to three over five thousand, fifteen thousand pounds and ten in total. He has deleted the word "non-farm," so he can regulate farm equipment also. Item one-three limits semi-trucks and trailers to one. The current ordinance limits only the truck portion to three. Amendment seven-point-one-two-E-four says no more than ten motor vehicles, including trailers. Trailers are not motor vehicles. Amendment seven-point-one-two-E-five says that I won't be able to park any motor vehicles within fifty feet of my lot line. This will cut fifty feet off of a screened parking area that I built at the request of the zoning department. Amendment seven-point-one-two-E-six limits indoor and outdoor storage to ten vehicles or equipment of any kind. Why does anybody care how many vehicles I store inside my building? Items seven and eight are not even needed because they're covered in other ordinances. Item two, amendment seven-point-one-point-two-D, is very restrictive for equipment or vehicle of any kind that might have the company name or logo on it, which is every vehicle I own. In the ordinance in question, seven-point-one-two-E, as written, is very clear that it only applies to non-farm second-division vehicles. It is clear to me that this board only intended to regulate semi-trucks in rural home occupancies. It is also clear from minutes presented by John Hall that Frank DeNovo wanted to regulate all commercial vehicles and limit the total number of trailers to seven, with the total number of vehicles, including trailers and off-road vehicles and pickups, to ten. This board did not agree. They gave Mr. DeNovo an ordinance to enforce that only regulated second-division vehicles and permitted trailers and off-road vehicles with no limits. So Mr. DeNovo enforced the ordinance as he wanted, instead of the ordinance this board gave him to enforce. He created handouts to the public that regulated all commercial vehicles, instead of only second-division vehicles, acting directly against the will of this board. John Hall stated in a ZBA meeting that he has enforced this ordinance for twenty years the same way Frank DeNovo had in the past, and this is very true. Instead of enforcing the ordinance as it was written by this board, he has shown a pattern of twisting it to be what he wants instead. He continues to use handouts and forms that refer to commercial vehicles instead of second-division vehicles. He stated in a ZBA meeting of seven-twenty-eight-eleven that when interpreting seven-point-one-point-two-E, he just took out second-division vehicles. Wow. Why does he get to do that?
Mr. Dillard, time's up. Aaron Ammons.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aaron Ammons, eleven oh eight North Bucy. It's a wonderful way to spend my birthday evening, to come here and hang out with y'all. Thanks a lot. I sure appreciate that. I take all the collections, you know, y'all wanna donate, that's cool, too. Yeah, twenty-five, same age as you, Ralph. So, of course, I'm here to address this issue of the, I don't guess, I don't know what the new label is now, but it boils down to a county jail issue. And as I sat and I listened to a couple of the comments about selling bed space, it was very reminiscent of a time when we came before many of you who were on this county board a long time ago to address a jail phone contract issue that you all had, charging exorbitant rates to the inmates, and basically making money off the backs of poor people. And I said, wow, this is the same thing. Whether it's ICE, make selling bed space, or post-conviction that you're gonna sell bed space, or other counties that don't have room for other inmates, so you have no problem selling black folks. That's what it really boils down to. So we should call this an auction, is what we should call it, really, because that's what it boils down to, is black, brown, and poor white folks that's gonna be put in these county jail. And to spend fifteen or twenty million to build a new jail, you have no problem with that. You will manipulate the system, even these so-called liberals, who will manipulate the system, put together a committee, put no black folks on it, nobody who's gonna actually address the issue or have any opposing voice, and then say, you're a Democrat, or you have some sort of platform that's supposed to address the issues of people who are vulnerable, the vulnerable populations. So I figure, I had brought some gloves, but I didn't put them on, because I figured we should take them off tonight and just call it what it is, right? You have no problem housing more black folks and spending a whole millions and millions of dollars manipulating the taxpayers and leaving low amounts of bills on the juvenile detention center or the county facility, so you can continue to roll over the quarter cent sales tax and use it for job creation for a select few, and then give five percent, a measly two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year maybe, to social justice or to youth programs, as if that's really going to address anything. So I figured I would talk to the people who are listening and the people who might be writing articles, because it's clear, most of y'all got your mind made up already. I see some of the relationships that have, the eye contact that's being made and stuff. I know you got your mind already made up on how you're gonna vote on this thing, but the voters wanna know, especially those in District Five and those who I go talk to and been talking to for the past month, they wanna know, how are you pushing something forward when you don't even have a price tag on how much it would cost to fix the old building? I mean, before you start talking about building something new, you would at least ask the sheriff and his, and whatever this team that Bets and the rest of it put together, to at least come to you and say, hey, listen, here is the figure that it would cost to fix this, and it's fifteen million dollars. I haven't heard a single figure of what it would actually cost to fix the downtown jail. It's like, let's hush, just push it all through, and let's talk about RFPs, let's talk about building. Let's put together a team of the state's attorney, who should be neutral in this process, is talking about, yeah, I want you to build a new jail. Why? So you can put more people in there? That's what you wanted to build it for? Because you should be neutral. You're supposed to represent the taxpayers in a neutral way. You ain't supposed to be out here advocating for a building of a new jail. You should be somewhere quiet like you are when, when police are beating up folks. That's where you should be. So we need to stop playing games. I'm not gonna play with you no more. All you folks that's supposed to be, it's fifteen, I'm a Democrat on this piece, and you can't, you can't come together to address an issue that's a part of your platform? And you claim to be liberal? Bets? Are you kidding me? So I, 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 there was no need for me to come in here and try to sugarcoat that and get anybody that's off the fence and all that type of stuff, because I know what y'all gonna do, you've been doing it for the longest. Maybe hopefully you'll see a process that the taxpayers are not happy about this, not happy about you playing games with the money, using it for your benefit, and then still shuffling our children off to be incarcerated. And don't buy for a minute, people that's listening, that they worried about the inmates over there. Please, they worried about the people that work over there. They wanna work in a nicer facility, so they trying to make everything convenient, but they don't care less about the people who are inmates over there. You never have, and you never will. So I have to go to another meeting. I hope y'all enjoy y'all, rest of y'all night.
Patsy Howell, please. Patsy Howell.
Hi. My name is Patsy Howell. I live at one-seventeen Urbana, downtown Urbana. And I came out tonight without my oxygen, can't hardly walk, but I thought it was important enough to talk about this issue. Economically, this is just insane. Communities are falling apart. School boards are going broke, you know, counties are going broke, countries are going broke. And you wanna push through this kind of project for this kind of money? So just economically. And when I say push through, I mean push through without having the voters and the people in this county speak to this and what they think about spending this much money. Push through. And it probably is not gonna happen, I'm gonna tell you the truth, okay? Because in the last year, I think that there's been a very good outspoken cry of some of the injustices in this county, and it will continue. So don't think you're gonna push it through without everybody knowing it. So that, that, we'll get that off the table now. As far as humane facility, for one thing, the criminal justice system is humane. Why is it humane? Because whenever you lock up sixty, fifty, sixty percent of African-Americans, this is inhumane. But let's talk about if a building can make humane conditions. I happen to find myself in jail a couple of times, just visiting, and at one point, number one, the women in the room could, should consider if they wanna go to a bathroom in a place where everybody can look in, guards, anybody walking by. That's what happens at the satellite. I think that's inhumane. A woman in a situation needed a sanitary napkin. It was thrown to her, out of a package, like, like she was a dog. Okay? Pregnant woman laying on the concrete floor. No, it's inhumane. And that's not gonna make for a safer society. It makes for a sadistic society. So inhumane is, is, is sort of the overall look at criminal justice. Then we go to a committee that's been designated to look at all these things. Now, I'm not gonna go over, I have five minutes, so I'm not gonna go over all the things that's already said. Okay? All the things that should be, could be done. What I am gonna say is obviously, like Aaron said, you, there no need to, to put on the gloves. We all know each other. Even though we might not know each other's name, we know each other. This committee that has been chosen to push this through, number one, I don't know legally if it's conflict of interest, but I would think, when you have a group of people, that their, their interests, their livelihood, their husband's livelihood, their friends, their social life, everybody around them, it depends on this, on the criminal justice system. And that's who you're gonna have to be biased and, and, and look at these things? Most of the people that stepped up here tonight from the university had more research and the ability to research and degrees to be on a committee to look at some of these issues. Like I said, I'm not gonna talk about the issues, because other people are talking about these issues. So I would suggest that before you sit back and think that you can be in this obscure building, in this obscure little room, and, and business as usual, not on this one. Not on this one. There's too many communities that have something to say, that have something to lose. Obviously, I'm Muslim, so, you know, we have the immigrant community, because the immigrant community is not just, you know, we're talking about Middle Easterners, too, that are here to go to school, various people. You know, so we, all those communities are interested in this. Obviously, it's, it's the top of the agenda in the black community. You know, we're up there at city council all the time, talking about the injustices being done to our black youth. And all you can come up with is, oh, let's build a bigger jail, maximum security, and maybe we can sell in a few years. And just before I leave, I wanna remind you, this is not your money. This is not your personal money.
Five minutes, Ms. Howell.
Okay. So that's all I gotta say. You ain't gonna hide. Thank you.
Kencelo. I'll point out, we got about fourteen minutes left for four people, so.
I'll try and be brief. So good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Kencelo. I live at six-eleven West Hill Street. I also teach urban planning, and the things that keep me awake at night, and usually with my students, we more focused on the question and issue of affordable public housing. And so typically, I would and have made these sorts of comments before the Housing Authority of Champaign County, Mr. Ed Bland, and so forth. But by a whole range of insights, and particularly last week, it came to my attention that maybe I need to kinda make those representations to the county board, and essentially about public housing, because it appears by all standards that the most generously funded and profitable public housing for poor people of color is jails and prisons. So we getting in a society where that's the sort of choices that we're going to have to, that we are faced with, is how are we gonna, how- to, that we are faced with, is how are we gonna house and make affordable housing choices for poor people, and these generally are people of color. The point is that they serve overlapping populations. And it's not, in my view, a coincidence that at the same time, Champaign County is facing a eradication of public housing, Joanne Dorsey and Dunbar Courts are being revitalized, and so there's no coincidence that this debate is happening at the same time as you're seeing the more or less eradication of public housing as we know it through mixed income housing. So what is my point, quite briefly? I think the issue is that the expansion of jail is not simply just a facilities issue. It is much broader, and when we lift up your eyes from that sort of narrow confines and you start to see the broader context, it has to be an issue for justices and social services. And there are some players in local government that have to be connected. And in some contexts, Giuliani's, you know, New York City or Chicago, the connection between the eradication of public housing and social services and incarceration of poor immigrant and people of color is quite obvious. So this is why I think there's an opportunity right now for this board to make and connect that dots much more than what the debate has up to date. So thank you very much for your time.
Hello, I'm Julie Watkins, and I live at 805 East Green Street in Urbana, and I'm going to put my voice to one more unanimous against, um, expanding or making a new jail. I don't think that more jail spaces everybody else has been talking about is gonna help people. Um, so I'm, I'm, as a taxpayer, I'm disturbed that you're choosing to use my money this way. I would rather money be used to help people rather than make people miserable. And by the way, who is ever building a prison is gonna make money. The USA is getting to be as much having a prison industrial complex as it has a military industrial complex. And we're at the point that I believe one in every 100 people in the United States is in jail or in prison, and that's not how it should be, we should go the other way. And certainly, if we're spending this much money that we don't have, we ought to have a referendum or something, the people ought to vote, there ought to be a representative sort of board to discuss the thing. And, um, I'm afraid that if, once you get committed to start building the building, oh, well, we gotta finish it, and you'll just steal the money from people who really need it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Daryl Cruz, and just a quick comment, if, if the board is going to limit public comment to an hour, I would suggest that the process, that those people that turn in their requests first and get here, be allowed to speak rather than people that walk in late that may have a prepared statement or not have the opportunity.
Daryl, you have your full five minutes, don't worry.
Yeah, okay, I know, but here we go, do that. Thank you. I would like to speak, evening. I know the county board members want to do the right thing, but the jail space improvement project being presented to you this evening is lacking in clarity and substance on a number of points. This major task warrants a careful, deliberate, and transparent process that is thorough and not time-driven. Not only should jail space needs, services, design plans, and funding options be included, but also related community-based mental and health services as well as criminal justice sentencing alternatives that could directly influence jail construction plans. The inclusion of a more comprehensive analysis of these issues would better inform board decision-making and reflect more closely the community desire as to how the board should allocate limited financial resources to address community needs while addressing public safety. The timeline of activities, which I'll refer to in a second, of the jail committee seems to be primarily focused on construction issues, and that is its inherent weakness. This process does not incorporate an integrated approach that can weigh and balance the merits of construction with the merits for additional community services and alternatives to incarceration. This process does not provide for a financial distribution model that differentiates cost benefits and liabilities regarding more or less jail construction, increased or fewer community service, or more or fewer alternative sentencing options. The linkages are just not fully developed, and that should cause some hesitation on the part of the board. And I'd like to speak to, one comment to each of the five points that you refer to in the proposal on the agenda on F, and number one being the establishment of a jail improvement project planning team, which you're gonna discuss and approve. I think the public would like assurances from the board itself that there would be opportunities for public input and discussion within the community settings such as schools and libraries at appropriate stages, and that these public forums be built into the timeline, and it's not. Number two, the second point, approve a release of RFP for consultant services for needs assessment and pre-design planning. I would suggest that the public would like assurances from you, the board, that the needs assessment and pre-design plans will include a full exploration of each of the three options still open for consideration, not just the committee's predisposition for expansion at the satellite. The third item that's listed, cost assessment and comparative study of jail space solutions at satellite jail and downtown correction center. I'm sure the public would like assurances from you, the board, that the cost assessment and comparative study be thorough and comprehensive in all direct and indirect costs and benefits associated with each of the three building options. The fourth one, which is most troubling, is the Gardner Together impactors and social justice system to present information regarding improvements and implementing strategy or suggestions in a jail's community report. The public would like assurances from you, the county board, that such a task force will be created, that this task force and the jail committee will be required to coordinate their work so that each informs the other and vice versa, that this includes shared funding proposals and models, and that specific joint activities be included in the timeline. Without that integration, the system isn't gonna work as you had it set up to inform each other. And lastly, the funding model based on current available resources. The public would like assurances that the funding model be comprehensive in its vision, not only focusing on jail construction, but also consider the value and payback of improving and supporting community mental and health services as well as improving and expanding alternative sentencing options. Now is not the time for the board to be shortsighted, focused only on jail expansion. Research now tells us there are equally or more cost-effective ways to addressing crime than just building jail cells. The board must explore all options before committing the public to expensive jail expansion. Thank you.
Sue Keller.
Hi, my name's Sue Keller, I'm an Urbana resident, a mental health counselor here in town, and I'm here as a volunteer with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Champaign County affiliate. And, um, and I would just like to thank you all for all of the work that you do to make tough decisions about very difficult situations. I realize that, um, that this isn't the right place, but I just found out, um, that this meeting was going on, and I understand that the line item about spending money of possible jail replacement or expansion can't simply be put into the services that I'm going to suggest. But I do want to offer that, NAMI Champaign County would be happy to partner with folks to work on, um, expanding some of the excellent diversion and specialty court systems that have shown great promise through the state's attorney's office, work with us, the public defenders work with us, um, in our community, and also to work on prevention issues. Obviously, it's not as simple as that, but I think that there are many alternatives to expanding or replacing our local jails. And we'd be honored to, um, help partner with people to find a, a full spectrum of possibilities of reducing the jail population, reducing overcrowding if there is overcrowding, and looking at more just and fair use of the public's money. So I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, and, um, please consider, uh, spending money on something different.
Is there any other, further public commentary? See none, we'll close that. Uh, are there any communications from the board members? I'm gonna point out that you all have a, uh, this handout right here. It's the Zone Three Meeting of the Illinois Association of County Board Members. It's taking place on March 3rd, and it will be in this room at nine o'clock in the morning. This is something that the Illinois Association of County Board Members, they sponsor it, so they'll be talking about some of the subjects as well as, you know, pending or possible future legislature in Springfield. Is there any, Ms. Holderfield?
I just wanted to let, uh, the board members know that the Convention and Visitors Bureau is starting, is in the beginning stages of a strategic planning for the, uh, next several years. Uh, we had a meeting this morning to start that process, and that as we get information regarding their strategic plan for the future, I will be giving you that information, or the CBB will be sending it to Pius, but I'm pretty happy to see that their long-range goals, their business plan and the strategic plan have began, begun, and we will be having meetings in March to, um, start that, that process. So if you have any, any feedback, feel free to give me that information, and I'll be happy to convey it at the strap meeting.
Any other communications? Okay, let's move on to, um, Elok, Mr. Kurtz.
Good evening. Move on to the agenda of environment land use. First, our annual report of land use and land resource management trends with Champaign County. Susan.
Hi, Susan Monte with the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, what you had on your tables when you came in was a copy of the PDFs that were online, which missed every other page, so what you have there is the complete text. It's an informational report, uh, first of an annual series, uh, based on largely the available US census data. And essentially, um, it's a five-page report containing, uh, upgrades and updates to demographic data. The county population, for instance, increased 12% over a 10-year period, that's indicated there. Municipalities data is provided for your review. Uh, there have been municipalities with the greatest increases include Savoy, Mohammed, and St. Joe. Municipalities with the greatest decrease are indicated as well, Thomasboro and Ivesdale. Townships data is provided for your review. Uh, townships with the greatest increases in populations are listed, Tolono Township, Brown Township, and Newcombe Township. Now, relatively speaking, the increases in those townships, it's all descriptive data that can be, uh, provided so that it may be misunderstood, but for instance, in Brown Township, it's an increase of 500 to that population. Townships with the greatest decreases in population, East Bend, Summer, and Lodo. So page three contains the, uh, data about the number of permits issued for non-farm dwellings in the unincorporated area since the date of adoption of the LRMP in April of 2010, so you see that data there. Trend data relatively consistent with the downturn in economic conditions which occurred in, in 2009. Page four contains information about, uh, status of planned upgrades to public sanitary sewer systems and facilities. Essentially, Village of Homer has completed their installation of public sanitary sewer. Bonville expects theirs to be, their plans are in progress, as are plans in the Mohammed area to upgrade their facilities and expand their facilities. Page five contains some information about the Vermillion and Little Vermillion River Conservation Opportunity Areas Action Plan, which was accepted by its partners in March of this past year. And that is a wildlife action plan, and you can read about that. Also included is information about annexations that have occurred over the past two years. Uh, and some updated information about the volume of electronics collected for recycling. So this is an informational report, um, no action is required, other than you accept it.
Uh, is there any discussion on this report? Patsy?
Um, yes, I have some information questions I'd like to ask Ms. Monte. On page four, you do give us a matrix showing the total number of acres lost because of annexation. What I would like to have provided for us is, uh, over this 10-year period, um, as the COOCA line has been moving out, I'd like to know how many of those acres are A1, A2, and CR, because that's very important for us to know.
Just, just to clarify, this is only data from April of 2010.
Oh, 2010, okay.
Right. It's an annual report.
It's an annual report.
And, and it does incorporate the decennial census data, so that's where you.
But I do want to, I do want to do that.
But I understand your concern.
And then if you have, uh, the statistic as to what has been the proclivity of covering land in ratio to population growth.
That's an analysis that I haven't had the time to work on, I find it interesting as well. This annual update is scarcer than I would prefer, but I, I think that's an excellent idea to, to include as time allows.
That, that would be great, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but I do know at one point in time Bruce and I talked about, we were covering land four to five fold in relation to, relation to population increase, so, so I think that's an important factor to have. Thanks.
Carol, did you?
Tell us when I move that in place, the report.
Thank you, I was about to ask for that motion, second by Mr. Quisenberry. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, our report will be on file. B, proposed minor changes to Champaign County Land Resource Management Plan, map included. I want, I want to emphasize the fact, we're not changing any policies here, we're not changing any of our goals on the LRMP, this is just an update, minor data and map updates. John, you want to? Susan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so this, this proposed set of corrections and updates is based on a review that is scheduled to happen on an annual basis as well, in accordance with the 2011 work plan, this is, this is what we have for this year to propose. Over the past year, I've received some correspondence from the Village of Ivesdale, and there are some corrections made to that data to reflect the changes to the, um, the Village of Ivesdale Fire Protection Service ISO rating and their provision of non-transport advanced life support at the paramedic level. So I've made those minor corrections, and those are highlighted for you on pages five and six. Also, since we have some portion of the data available from the US Census Bureau for the 2010 results, I've updated the tables, tables that are in, as a, this would be provided as an addendum to the LRMP, so the tables for those population, um, data, population trends tables four dash one, four point four dash three, and four dash four, those would be updated just to include that, that data, and then also to adjust the public sanitary sewer data table to reflect that the Village of Homer is now served. And, and then there's one correction, as I reviewed with the municipalities who have the contiguous urban growth area around them, any corrections or changes to the provisions of public sanitary sewer. When I was meeting with the Village of Mohammed representatives, and there was a correction caught, and this handout that you have in front of you blows it up so that you can see where the area is. It's around in the circle, it's the, to include that in the contiguous urban growth area, it's a residential, existing residential subdivisions consisting of approximately 115 acres, all developed tracts, five acres approximately, estate tracts since the 70s, and there's septic systems are, are. And their septic systems are, are starting to fail. The village is upgrading their sanitary sewer and will be trying to annex them into the village over the next year. So this is, this is an area that should have been included within the contiguous urban growth area, and it's just a correction to include it. These are residential areas. They are indicated as such in the comprehensive land use plan of the Village of Mohammed, and the planned expansion of their public sanitary sewer facility will serve these and make service available to these residents within the, the next few years. So that is the only correction that I would propose that you vote to approve on the contiguous urban growth area.
Any discussion on, Stan first?
I don't know if this has much to do with what you're talking about, Susan, but Deb was at our meeting at the Board of Health, and if my memory serves me right, it seems like the feds are going to be coming into the state and start enforcing more on these bleach fields and sanitary sewers that are out in the rural areas and what have you. I guess it's been mandated for a while, and a lady that was there from Broadlands spoke up about their community couldn't afford some upgrades. So it's going to put a quandary, I guess, on some communities. And I think they're going to hold a roundtable discussion, Deb, sometime in the future, if my memory, and put together with townships and that, so.
Thank you for noting.
We're hoping you get enough funds to help us all out.
Any other discussion? Patsy?
Again, an information question for Ms. Monte. Thanks for the visuals, and I'm looking at the large one that came in our packet, and I'm looking at the Couga boundaries and comparing them to the map that's in the LRMP. And I, I don't see the boundaries, if I could overlay them, the boundaries aren't working correctly specifically on the north part of Rantoul, the east part of Urbana, the west part of St. Joe. Can you sort of explain to us why that might be the case?
Right, well, the municipals, excuse me, the, the cities of Urbana, St. Joe, and Rantoul have had slight increases in, in their area. So that would account for the difference in municipal corporate limits.
But that doesn't explain, then, why the Couga hasn't moved out?
Right, the Couga is a separate thing. It's not, not dependent on municipal annexations. It, it is dependent on two designations. It's dependent on the comprehensive land use plan for that municipality, which is typically only updated every five to 10 years. So that, that's like a different thing that it's dependent on, and the availability of public sanitary sewer and any changes to that system.
Any other discussion? I'd like to have a motion to accept the changes, please. Mr. Carter? A second. Ms. Anderson? Any further discussion? All in favor of the changes?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'd like a second motion to move these, recommend it to the board for approval, to the full board. Mr. Rosales first, Ms. Estrick second. Any discussion on that, moving it to the full board for changes approval? Carol?
I have a question. We had a no vote, so it would go to full board anyway, right?
Well, the, the motion was to accept the changes first. Now the second motion is to move it to the full board. I need it to change, have the changes accepted. So the second motion will be to move it to the full board.
I think it automatically goes to the full board.
Pius, did you have something?
Well, yeah, perhaps our parliamentarian could clarify it, I mean, put him to work.
You got approval here, that takes it to the board.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, the first motion to accept the changes moves it to the board. Thank you, Ms. Ammons.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I, I do appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. To C, by the way, it's not on the agenda, on the.
Consent.
Consent, right, we have a no. All right. We have a C, direction to the zoning administrator regarding proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to amend limits on vehicles and equipment in rural home occupations. For discussion, I'd like a motion. Phone move by Mr. Langenheim.
Second.
Second by Ms. Petrie. Discussion, Ms. Ammons.
Mr. Hall, I think I asked this question in a caucus because I wasn't clear on why we were making this change, and the gentleman in public participation says it's because of him, and I wanted you to be able to address that.
Well, it was a case involving Mr. Dillard that went to the ZBA, wherein the ZBA decided that the ordinance was not clear. Once the ZBA decided that, then it was clear that it needed to be made clear. But in fact, we actually get lots of complaints all the time about the rural home occupations because in many ways, I think they allow activities that most people just are not prepared to see happen next door. And I wouldn't want you to think that this is the only time these things have actually caused disagreements among neighbors. We've had two or three other instances in the past few years where these same things were at issue, although not of the same magnitude.
Diane.
I just would like to make a comment here, being a rural homeowner and my husband having a self-employed business, that many of these items in here were, I mean, if we have a group coming in to do a concrete pour, and we've got more than one person on there as the crew, we'd be in violation. And, and once again, I think rural means rural, you don't have neighbors right on top of you generally if you're rural. So I think some of the standards in here, while they may be good for larger operations, you've kind of limited it to the, some of the self-employed that aren't in ag, the way I read this. And I, I have a little problem with that.
This amendment could be expanded if you would give me.
Remember, this is for direction. This is direction.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, is there's a lot of things in here that I don't think you're looking at the overall picture of the businesses that are in the rural areas. I mean, some are larger than others, and I, I just kind of glanced at some of this stuff here, and it says lot smaller than five acres, no more than one employee may be present on the premises, and no more than one additional employee may report to the site for work performed on the premises. And then in the, in the local area, I also noticed that you have something that if they're going to do something in their house as a business, let's say woodworking shop in the garage or whatever it is, and it's a business, that they cannot report before 8:00 in the morning and they've got to be gone by 6:00. Well, that's kind of odd, a lot of people don't work that. So I think what we've done is we've kind of put more rules, maybe too specific in some instances, in this that you're trying to revamp, if you will.
Okay, and, and just to be clear, we are talking about home occupations, not things that are actually called businesses per se. I mean, these are things that happen.
What do you call a home occupation, then? Maybe that's what I need clarified.
Well, a home occupation is something where you live there and it's your business that you conduct out of your home.
Yes, like Michael's Construction at 1548 County Road.
As opposed to a contractor's facility that gets a different level of review and you can't do by right, it's automatically a public hearing.
And this is even when you're self-employed, which we are, so.
Stan.
Well, I guess reading some of that, what Diane says, and again, you're just saying this is for direction, so there's room for fine tuning, but when I see stuff come before this body, my concern is, we can make all the ordinances we want, it's the enforcement of the ordinances. So if we're going to do something, let's tweak it to the point that we can enforce what's there. And John, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but we worked on Cherry Orchard together and there was junk vehicles out there, and it was just like pulling teeth because of all the notices and the sheriff getting out there and everybody getting out there. So to have something on paper is fine, and we already have some ordinances, but until we can enforce what we have, I don't think we should be adding more. And I know, I live in a rural setting, I have neighbors that have vehicles and motorhomes and all types of stuff, and it drives me nuts, so I turn up my stereo, no. But I just think that some of that is good, but we have to be careful about the enforcement of it. If we pass laws, no matter what they're for, whether it be smoking or what, let's enforce them. Because passing laws, anybody can do, but it's the enforcement of doing it and doing it right. So with this ordinance, I would say the ones we already have with junk vehicles, and if they're running a business and they're supposed to be licensed, let's cite them for that stuff, then fine tune what else we need to do as we go along, like we do with restaurants and that.
Understood, but we have an instance now where the zoning board doesn't know what the ordinance is intending. It's affecting a landowner, and I would, the reason I brought this before you tonight is so I could get some direction. Your, your direction might be no weight limits on vehicles and let as many vehicles and equipment as the landowner wants. That's all the direction I know to deal with, that I would need to deal with the problem we have right now. But I would like to, to help get the current problem resolved, so the landowner knows what he can do.
What, can I ask what? What exactly is the current problem? I mean, what is it that, is it that someone's complaining there's too many vehicles on the property? Is somebody complaining they're too heavy? Is somebody what?
Well, we've had a neighbor complain about the number of vehicles. The neighbor looked at the ordinance and thinks that it should be limited. That's what I, that's what I've done since I was the zoning administrator. It's what's been done since 1993. If this committee decides that we don't need a limit on equipment, we think that a home occupation should be able to have as many pieces of equipment as large as they can afford to and be a successful business, then that's how I would conduct this amendment.
So move. John, you're not recognized right now, Steve. Astrid.
It just seems to me there ought to be some distinction between a home occupation and a commercial occupation, and the point at which a home occupation becomes a commercial operation. And you seem to be.
Okay.
Sort of generously giving quite a lot of commercialization.
Stephanie, you were next.
I would like to ask to suspend the rules and ask Kelly Dillard to come up so I can ask him some questions.
Who's that?
Kelly Dillard. Mr. Dillard?
My second, Dan.
I need to vote on suspending the motion.
We need a motion to suspend the rule.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rule, please.
Second?
Sir.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sir? State your name again for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Dillard.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. You were explaining earlier regarding the effects of this particular, several parts of this ordinance that, that we're being asked to vote on. And because we're basically just getting this information, is, is there any other information you can give us to enlighten us as to what and why we should be voting to support what's been presented before us?
Well, to start with, the current ordinance, in my opinion, regulates only second division vehicles. That's what this board voted on back in 92, and it's not been enforced that way ever since 92. A second division vehicle, and even in the minutes they talked about, they were concerned about the number of trucks, semi-trucks on a property. And basically, that's what a second division vehicle is, is a semi-truck. And right now, it limits semi-trucks to three, over 8,000 pounds, I believe it is. And it doesn't speak to anything else. Heavy equipment, farm equipment, actually, it says non-farm, so anything that's farm equipment is not included. But it doesn't speak to heavy equipment.
And could you?
What I, what I want to do here right now is, I'm, I'm going to stop the discussion and with Mr. Dillard here. Are there any other questions at this point for Mr. Dillard before we go back to discussing direction to John? Patsy, do you have a question?
Well, it isn't a question, it's a, a request for information. I concur with Ms. Holderfield that we have just been given this information and we don't have complete documentation. So if we could get a hold of the ZBA document from this case, and you spoke orally, so you, I don't know if you have any of your comments in written form that you could provide so that indeed, we can go back and actually have a chance to look at your comments against the items you were citing in the ordinance to give us a much better chance of giving well-thought-out direction to Mr. Hall, which I think is what's important for us to be doing.
All right, are there any further questions for Mr. Dillard?
I, I, can I just?
Stephanie?
Could you please tell us what type of business that you are conducting out of your rural home, and how much, how much acreage you have in the surrounding rural home area?
I have an excavation business. I believe my plat is 2.18 acres.
Thank you.
May I ask just myself a question? How many pieces of equipment do you have? How big are they?
I have about, it depends on what you call equipment, but roughly 20 pieces of equipment, and not all of which are at my location. They're spread all over the county. They range from 5,000-pound trenchers to 100,000-pound excavators.
Thank you. Pius, did you have a question? Diane, did you have a question?
How long have you been doing the business at this location, sir?
For about five years.
Thank you.
Lloyd.
Well, wasn't it processed from the board? Don't you have to come in and get an application and go through the process before you can do that?
No, I applied to the zoning commi, zoning department for a rural home occupancy permit. And then John Hall decides whether I meet the criteria or not.
I'm asking you what is approved from the board?
In the beginning.
I guess I'm not, it was approved by John Hall in the beginning, yes.
From the board?
No.
Now, it should be, I did that before.
I'm sorry.
We bring it back, the board have to approve.
This isn't.
Mr. Hall don't have that power to do that.
This isn't a variance that I was asking for.
So we had same process years ago, out in the Mohammed for another gentleman, just like you did, for to lock him up in jail, and I, and, what is it?
John.
Well, he's, he's passed now, that I used to be on this committee, and you have to go through that process and bring him back to the board, they approve it, and then you can operate your business. Now, if that wasn't done, then there's something wrong.
I don't personally know what the process is, so.
Well, you're wrong. I tell you now, you need to go back and go through the process.
Chris?
Rest of point of order. What action is being requested, what action is being requested in the committee, and is there a motion on the floor, and if so, could it be stated, please?
We suspended the rules, Chris, so that we can question this gentleman.
No, I, I understand.
The motion was for direction on where we want to go with this. There's no action to be taken.
So there's no motion on the floor?
That's correct.
Thank you.
But there was. There was, there was a motion for direction to John Hall on this, on this issue.
I, I, with apologies, I don't understand what he motioned for.
Parting of information, I believe there's a motion that would accept the proposed amendment there.
Yes.
Which is on pages 24 and 25.
I think that answers my question, but I'd like to clear that this is no longer a discussion regarding the direction, if there's in fact a motion on the floor to move this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Could you, is that going to be the case?
No, I don't think we had a, we didn't have a, a motion to accept this amendment, Pius.
I'll check with the recording secretary, please.
What is it?
There is a motion.
The zoning proposing ordinance text amendment.
That much was made by Mr. Langenheim and seconded by Ms. Petrie.
So there is a motion on the floor for action. Okay, Lloyd.
All I'm saying, I'm not trying to be, you know, but if we going to do things according to their law, like they supposed to be done, if the gentleman does not have a legal document say it was approved by this board, I don't know what you're voting on.
Well, we're voting on changing the amend, the, the ordinance. We're changing this ordinance here, has nothing to do with Mr. Dillard per se. This has to do with changing it for, I'm sorry, John.
Well, I, I just.
Right.
I have asked for permission to proceed with a text amendment in a public hearing at the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have shown you the changes that I believe are consistent with what I understand the ordinance requires now, and with the various complaints we've had from neighbors over the past few years about similar situations like this. So it's just permission to proceed with the text amendment. This would not go to the full board. This would not go to the full board. If I get permission to proceed, this would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If it gets deferred, we can come back next month after you've had more time to think about it. This went out with the agenda last week. This didn't just get placed before you tonight.
Okay.
My question was, the way the question was asked, that's what I think about it.
Lloyd?
Because he was asking for it.
All right, let's get back to the motion. Pius?
One thing I should be in there?
Mr. Dillard, thank you very much.
One thing I should be in there?
Okay, Mr. Dillard, thank you, sir.
My impression is that this refers to motor vehicles, but, you know, I believe a gentleman over that far outside room said something about there should be no limit. But, you know, you could have like vehicles that you haven't used in a while and say, well, that's part of my limit. So perhaps there should be something there whether they're operational or not. Is there something in there? Put it up, please, I didn't see what it was. Okay. Okay, all right. Clearly, it's covered, so I'll look through all my comments.
Right here.
Stan? I amend the motion at this point, that's on the floor, to, to have this come back to committee once we get some more information and that we have more time now that we've heard discussion. All right, you want to make a motion to defer?
Wait a second, I've had my hand up for a long damn time.
John, I'm sorry, John, I didn't see you.
You've seen me. Thank you.
There's two Johns, John and John. We'll give them both time to speak. Are you not going to take my motion at this time? Right, we'll, we'll hold off on your motion, Stan. John?
Can we have some discussion?
That's what we're here for. Call the shots, John.
Well, I'm just asking you, can you just hold it?
I will hold it. Thank you. Let me know when I can let go.
I'll send up flare signals for you. Thank you. There's been a lot of talk about rural home occupations, what is this? What are we doing? This is a rural home occupation that's administrative permit. It allows someone to use their, their property out in an unincorporated area for their, for their business purposes to a point. Now, when, when you're off on a 14-foot oil and chip road, that's township maintained, it doesn't have the facilities to maintain a two-lane striped highway, it doesn't have the resources to keep potholes filled all the time. You have to limit what you're doing out there from a total commercial operation. I can take you not too far from my home and show you a farmer that's way over expanding his trucking operation. And roads around there are all 14-foot chip and oil, and they're a disaster. The highway road commissioner can't keep them up. But yet, he's running. Those operations are year-round. If you want to look at the farm operation, they're seasonal. These roads and the density out there for commercial operations can't handle it. Can't handle 100,000-pound excavator run up down the road year-round. But we have other provisions in the ordinance. If you live on a county highway or next to a state highway where you're not accessing a township road to a township road to a county road, but you're accessing your property to a state road, then you may want to look for a variance or maybe a change in the zoning plat. That's an option. But what we're looking at here is giving individual or a family an opportunity to have a business out there, have some restrictions, but yet not be intrusive to the neighbors or the community out there. In particular, if it's incorporated, it's agriculture. And I can tell you, trucks run up and down the roads year-round. And the more that they run up and down the roads year-round, the township out there just doesn't have the money to keep the roads up, period. Now, I have a question for John, though. Isn't there, didn't the state come out with a, like Jeff Boos probably answered that? Isn't there like an equalizer weight limit now on all the roads? There's no weight limits a township road commissioners can set? They're all 80,000-pound roads, weight limits?
That's my understanding with the exception of the three months during the year when the highway commissioner can limit the weights due to the seasonal environmental conditions.
Okay, okay, very good. That's, that's the only question I have. Thank you for your.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. John? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a couple of questions. Why did we change from non, non-farm vehicles to motor vehicles? What was the purpose of that change?
I'm proposing that change because I think that what we're talking about are vehicles used in the course of a business. All vehicles used in the course of that business. I, I think it's actually much simpler than the way the current ordinance looks at it.
Non-farm sounds a lot more simpler to me.
Well, that is an under, that is understood. I'd be happy to add non-farm, but we understand that that's, but that means farm equipment used in the course of agriculture, not farm equipment that may be used in the course of general contracting.
Okay, but there's not a lot of that going on. There's some, but not a lot. Another question I had, why is weight such an issue? Why are we, we deviating between 36,000 pounds and 15,000 pounds? And what has that got to do with the zoning ordinance?
Well, right now, the zoning ordinance limits the weights to no more than three over 8,000 pounds, which is ridiculous. You couldn't have four Suburbans in a home occupation under the current regulations. So that 8,000 pounds is too low. That needs to be increased. I proposed increasing it to 15,000.
Why not to 45,000?
That's up to this committee.
Or 50,000?
I have talked to three highway commissioners, and they believe that the one combination at 100,000 pounds is a good idea. They want their people in their townships to have that flexibility. They believe that two, no more than 36,000 is reasonable. They might agree with you that 45,000 is reasonable.
Well, I think, I think we're kidding ourselves. And one of the things that I've been upset, as you know better than anybody else, with this zoning ordinance is we, we're getting to try and put too much restrictions on things that don't amount to anything. There's an 80,000-pound road limit under normal circumstances. So why do we care if his crawler is 65,000 pounds or it's 100,000 pounds? What difference does it make? It still has to be moved on the road. So let's just not play games with numbers. I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Okay, well, I, I would like a little more direction.
100,000 pounds, maximum.
Period.
Yeah, is that, is that enough direction?
All right.
Ralph, did you have your hand up? Lloyd?
I don't know what's going on here. I thought the state regulated all the roads on our county road.
Absolutely, but the zoning ordinance?
Well, why don't you tell them this? Why don't you tell us, Mr. Jay, that the state does that? We go by what the state goes, tells us to do, on the load limit on the county road. That's why we need to go back to the committee form, so you all know what you're doing. And quit going behind the bush making these deals.
John? I got one more question, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. That's okay. Mr. Dillard brought up a good point that I don't understand, is why would you require him to be 50 foot from a screen that he put up there to screen his stuff? He's, that's taking 50 feet of his property, you siege away from him. It makes no sense. Why couldn't he back right up against his screen as long as it's on his property?
The ordinance is written so that vehicles have to be at least 50 feet from the property line. I've proposed that equipment would follow the same regulations. But if this committee directs me, you could provide more flexibility for equipment than for vehicles. Or in fact, you could get rid of the 50-foot separation for vehicles also.
Well, do you see any reason why we couldn't? If we're going to require him to screen it, why can't they back up against their screen? Look into that for me, would you? All right, Lloyd. Lloyd? Let's not, okay.
I wanted to answer the question because I don't.
What's the question, Lloyd? Go ahead. What, you have something to say? Go ahead.
The state come out and go out and examine the soil and the bed on your road. That's how they determine that. They make a test of the soil that's on that highway road. Then it determine how much weight they deserve. That's, that's the way it comes.
Well, that's not totally accurate, but I don't want to argue that issue. Okay, let's, let's not discuss that any further now. John?
Thank you. John, have you any comments from township road commissioners about any of these weight restrictions?
I've, I've talked to three highway commissioners that thought these were all good changes. But they might agree even more with bumping it up to 100,000. Well, I haven't had one highway commissioner say, well, why don't you let everybody have as many 100,000-pound vehicles as they want? No one has really suggested that, that I've talked to.
Well, I, I have a problem with those 10-ton coming down the road like that. 80,000's standard weight limit, and I, I have a problem. I think it should stay at 80.
Mr. Langenhart? Just a little leeway, Ralph.
A little leeway, huh? Okay.
Mr. Maxwell? Microphone, microphone. Thank you.
In support of Mr. Hall, I believe this is an attempt to make this a more liberal interpretation and to actually give some flexibility to the homeowner or to the rural home business, home occupation. The 80,000 pound is the max now. There's times it shouldn't go in and out. But I think this is an attempt, at least on John, and as a start, to allow people to have a semi in overnight loaded. Now, if granted, a little boy with hydraulic excavator is probably going to hit over 1,000 pounds. In order for that individual to move that out on the state system, he's going to have to get a permit anyway. And I think really what we're trying to do, what John's trying to do, is give more flexibility to the people out in rural areas operating business rather than trying to hamper their activities. I think it's good that we have input from Mr. Dillard, and maybe we're overlooking something, but at least we should consider and move on with that, in that light, rather than as the John's trying to pull something on us. I don't believe that's the case at all.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Mr. Langenhart, did you have your hand up? No, Diane?
Okay, if we can look at page 25, 2D, part of the revised paragraph. It talks about having a sign no more than six feet and one vehicle or piece of equipment with the name of the occupation. And then it says, any other vehicles or pieces of equipment must be stored. Now, I mean, I have a problem with that too, I guess, because if you have one truck that you use and then you have a trailer with your equipment in it, you got to put something in it. You got to build a garage or a storage or something. That's what this is reading?
Well, you don't have to necessarily store it if you have a second vehicle with the name on it. It can be screened. But we, we have a limit on signage, and, and if we're going to let all these vehicles have signs on them, then we, we shouldn't, then we don't really need a limit on signage because we're not limiting signage.
I guess what I'm looking at here, it said any additional motor vehicle or equipment. So I'm looking at a trailer and a truck. And I have to either put up a screen or I have to put something in.
That's with the name affixed on the?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm talking a trailer with tools in it and a pickup truck.
With the business name on the side?
Yes, sir. And because they both have a business name on them, that I have to either build a screen or put one of them in an outbuilding or a crib or something based on this. And that's awfully hard because, I mean, that's kind of a combo dealer, truck and equipment trailer.
Would you think that we should just do away with our limit on signage?
I'm saying is I think that this is too restrictive.
Okay.
I think this is very restrictive because I'm not saying that we shouldn't say, okay, you, you can't just have, you know, 50 trucks or whatever. But, but you have to be reasonable here with what kind of businesses are located in the unincorporated rural areas such as I am. So I feel that's kind of difficult to do.
All right, here's where I think we should go. There's obviously a lot of direction for John. So at this point, I'd like to see all the board members who have these great suggestions, get them to John. That's what he wanted from, from the beginning, direction on what we need to do on this. And I'd like every single one of the board members who's made some really good comments here tonight so that we won't spend the next two hours discussing this because I see that all of you have some really good suggestions. So would you please do this for me? Please send all of your suggestions to John, and we'll bring it back next month, the next Cal.
And there was a request for the minutes from the ZBA hearing?
Yes, we can have that too for you. So that we can handle that in a proper procedure and everyone can get all the information they need. And then John can make the adjustments that he needs. Does that sound? Motion to defer.
Second?
I have a motion, I have a second. All in, any discussion on this motion to get all the information to John? Steve?
Just a comment, please. I'm not sure how relevant it is. But I think it's a shame that we cut Mr. Dillard off with five minutes of public participation. He was finally beginning to explain things in terms that I could understand for the first time in my life, and Pius made him sit down.
All right, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Was that a motion to defer?
No, yes, sort of, I guess it was. That was Stan's motion, okay?
That's right.
Thank you very much. There were some really good comments. Let's move on. There is a monthly report, it's on your desk. It's the monthly report for January 2012. Like a motion to accept this report? Lorraine, one. Mr. Rosales, two. Any discussion on the report? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We have nothing to go on. What? Nothing. All right, thank you very, very much. We'll move to highway. Lorraine?
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have several things for highway and transportation.
Can we get on with it, please? Thank you.
Okay, we have several things from highway and transportation. The first thing is the monthly report for the town, for the county and township motor fuel tax claim for January 2012.
We receive and place and file.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, now we go into the highway commissioners' report.
Item B, we have a petition from the Philo Road District, page 27 of your agenda, Brian Mahary, to replace a culvert located in section-
Jeff, do you clarify, clear from the map? Which culvert is this? Is that the, is that the little pipe basically that runs under the road, right where it makes that right angle?
Yep.
Okay. It looks like it's collapsing.
Right, right. Yeah, we're going to replace it with a four by nine box culvert.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Carol?
I was just wondering, this item, I don't know what a box culvert is. If you can kind of give me a general picture of what this is. This is not a road.
Well, it's a culvert or a pipe underneath the road.
Oh, okay, then.
So it carries the water underneath the road.
And this particular fund is appropriate for fixing this culvert for Philo Township?
Yeah, the County Bridge Fund in the, in the state statute says that its primary reason for being used is to pay for 50% of the cost of rehabilitating or replacing culverts and structures on township roads.
Okay, Michael?
So, this is, this is not the county's. This is Philo Township's culvert?
That's correct.
Is this standard procedure? How, how, I read the state statute listed, but how often are we replacing township culverts?
Um, we do 15, 20 a year across the county, and the standard procedure is that the township highway commissioner, who obviously knows his roads, comes in with a, an issue. We go out and meet with him on the premises, and then we do an actual hydraulic analysis of what size culvert needs to be replaced back through there. We do the estimate, and then give him the estimate of cost, and, and he signs the petition, which comes before the board.
Okay. And if these culverts, or whatever the project is, if they're over .02% of the value of the taxable property in these districts, are we always replacing those culverts? I guess is what I'm saying.
As long as there's money in the line item, we basically take it on a first come, first served basis. So as long as it goes above that .02%, and they've made a request, and we feel that it's a project that is reasonable, yeah, we generally do these for them.
Maxwell?
May I comment a little bit more on the township bridge, or the matching tax for the bridges? The first priority for that fund is the townships and municipalities under 15,000. Anything that's left over can be used perhaps for county bridges, but again, it must be first to take care of the township system and any municipality within the county of under 15,000.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All right, moving on to item C, which is resolution for appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the salary and estimated expenses of the county engineer. This is for December 1 through November 30 of this fiscal year.
Okay, it's open for discussion. I saw Maxwell hand up first. Did you have a person here? Okay, Stephanie? Okay, Brendan?
It was clear in our caucus that there was a disconnect with why these funds are appropriated for this purpose. Jeff, if you or Deb could, could explain, just so everyone would know why this is necessary, I'd appreciate it.
The county engineer's salary is actually paid out of the motor fuel tax funds in the state of Illinois. And also, within this resolution, we can request that our federal aid dollars go to match 50% of the county engineer's salary as well. So this resolution does two things. It's a motor fuel tax funds for salary, as well as asking IDOT to transfer half of the salary from the Surface Transportation Program funds, so that that can also be used for the salary. So this is standard procedure in all counties.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All right, the next two items kind of go together, D and E. For some reason, the resolution appropriating the money for COATs in 2011 didn't reach the board for approval, so there's actually two resolutions for the exact same amount of money for 2011 and 2012, appropriating $26,284 from the motor fuel tax funds for the county share of the COATs that we have as our NPL here in Champaign County.
Omnibus motion to do both, D and E, for approval.
Second.
All in favor of doing all the bus motions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Moving on? Or do we need to vote now?
Question?
That was to put them together, right? Yeah.
Okay. We open for discussion?
I would like to move an option of the two, two motions, or two proposals.
Okay, you moving it?
Yeah, I think we already voted.
No, we didn't. Okay, I need a second. Are you second?
Hold on, items B and E.
If I may. So I, I made, I made an omnibus motion. It sounded like what you did was you, you asked for a vote just on having it be omnibus. Is that correct?
Yes.
So now we will take those two in an omnibus fashion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so in large second, Ralph moved in in large second, and now it's open for discussion. Ms. O'Connor?
Jeff, I ask this question every year. What do we get out of this, as far as the county?
We get a lot out of this, to be very honest with you. I mean, COATs is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for City of Urbana, City of Champaign. They do the, the TIP, which is a Transportation Improvement Program. They do our, they do our traffic counts on our behalf. They do all the studies that we have, whether it be for Route 130, or if it be for Staley Road, or if it be for other roads around the county. They, they actually do all the, any work that is kind of outside of the realm of the work that we have the ability to do, which is a lot of the computerized, and a lot of the modeling, a lot of the estimating and forecasting that they do for the counties, as well as the cities. I mean, the Unified Technical Work Program, which is what COATs actually does, is 53 pages long, and it's on the COATs website, if anybody's really interested in, in what COATs goal to accomplish in 2012. There is a Unified Technical Work Program, and as, like I said, it's 53 pages long, and it's, you'd be amazed on what they actually do, do. I can't sit here and recount it all, but it's, they do an amazing job, in my opinion.
Okay, I have bias of name, Ms. Hamlin.
RPC gets literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants in engineering for planning and things like this. Without COATs, I don't think they'd get very many of those at all.
That's correct.
Ms. Hamlin?
I just want to ask, the D, item D is, is basically back pay for 11.
That's correct.
All right.
Any more discussion? Patty?
To Ms. Pughsey, just a clarification, since this is a back pay, was it in the budget? We're just catching up with that, or what?
It was in last year's budget.
Actually, it already got paid out of last year. All we're doing is getting the motor fuel tax money back from the state to reimburse what we paid.
Okay, appreciate those clarifications.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, moving on to item F. And I'm going to discuss item F and H. They got broken up by G, but I'd like to take F and then H, because they kind of go together. I put a map, there is a map in your packet, but I also put a, a better map, a color copy of the map that's included in your packet, because the one in your packet got awful dark when they photocopied it. But this is the project that we are beginning in the designing and planning stages for, for 2012 summer. I don't know how many of you have had the privilege to drive between Fisher and Fusland, but if you have, it's probably better to use the township roads than the county roads, because the, the county road is in, in dire need of repair. The pavement quality index, which is how we rate our roads in Champaign County through our pavement management system, on that particular roadway is in the 20s, and that's a rating from 1 to 100. So you can see the poor condition that that roadway is in. It hasn't been, nothing's been done to it actually since 1985. So 26-year-old road, where we basically filled potholes and, and just tried to maintain it over the years. So what we're proposing and planning to do is not only to replace the bridge, which is in dire need along that stretch of roadway, but also to, to reclaim the roadway. And when I say reclaim, I mean a, a cold-in-place recycling job, where, and this is a very green initiative that some counties are undertaking. We, we did a short four-mile stretch of it over near Royal a couple of years ago, but we're planning on doing this entire 6.7 mile stretch from Fisher to Fusland, where we actually go out and they have a, a mill that weighs much more than 100,000 pounds that they bring out there. And basically, what they do is they mill up the existing asphalt on the roadway. It gets put back through a pug mill with about 2.5%, give or take a couple percents of oil, back into the, the recycled asphalt that they're milling up. It gets laid out behind the mill, and then they pick it up with a, with a pickup machine and put it back through a paver. So that's the cold-in-place recycling part of the project. So you're getting, you've got the old concrete pavement underneath there on one side, you've got an aggregate base on the other, and you get this flexible. It's kind of like, you guys probably all seen cold mix out on the roads, and townships do a wonderful job doing that, but they go buy that, that, you know, an open road for 200 bucks a ton, or whatever. They pay for that stuff, or they buy the materials and they mix it in a pug mill, and then take it out on the road. So basically, what we're doing is, we're doing that entire process right on top of the road. We're picking it up, we're putting the oil back into it, we're rejuvenating it, laying it back out, and putting it down with a paver, instead of trying to lay it out with a blade or do something, you know, that's less, or a little bit more primitive than putting it down with a paver. And then we'll come back with three inches of hot mixed asphalt over the top of it to, to make it an 80,000 pound truck route. It's by law, it's an 80,000 pound truck route, by what you can actually put out there and not tear it up. It's not even close to an 80,000 pound truck route. But we did get from the state of Illinois, a Truck Access Route Program grant, which is called TARP money, through the state of Illinois to do this project. And we received a letter on January 19th, we're going to get $625,000 for that project to make it an 80,000 pound roadway. So, I've been investigating the roadway. The bridge is obviously not in any shape to handle that kind of loads as well, so what we plan to do is, if we're going to be out there and tear everything up, and, you know, basically make people's lives miserable for a couple of months to live out there, we might as well replace the bridge, as well as replace the roadway. So what we have are two resolutions. Resolution F, which appropriates $370,000 from the County Bridge Funds for the replacement of the bridge, which is on the map. And then we have the resolution, which is H, which is actually appropriating enough money to rehabilitate the road. That's not the total cost of the project, but it, once you add in the $625,000 that we're going to get in TARP money from IDOT, that will be the total cost of the project. So we have two resolutions that kind of go together on this. And I'm sure there's some questions, because I was probably confused a few of you.
Alex, you're, you're moving it. Are you moving it? Can I get a second?
No, I'm asking questions. I'm sorry. Yes, I'll move it.
Okay.
Yeah, so moving F and H in and out of the session.
Okay. Okay, it's open for discussion now.
Jeff, is the bridge currently reduced weight limit?
No, it's not, but it should be.
Ms. Maxwell?
Can't hear you. Mike?
Are the plans completed, or have they even started for the bridge?
They're in the survey stage.
Ms. Pughsey?
Just an information question, since I don't know a lot about bridges. At what point can they no longer be repaired, and you actually have to replace a bridge?
Boy, there's a lot of different reasons. It can either be structurally deficient, which means it can't hold the repetitive loads that are forecast to go over the top of it. It could be hydraulically deficient, which means not enough water can go through it, and it's restricting the water flow. Or it can be, it can be deficient, such as roadway width, where, you know, you've got wider vehicles than that particular bridge can accommodate. So there's a lot of different definitions of when a bridge becomes deficient. In this particular case, this one's deficient, because it's literally, the concrete is falling off the bottom of it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, so I'll move back to G, since we skipped over that. Somebody had requested, and I think Patsy sent me an email after, somebody had requested that I bring you up to date with what's going on with the Olympian Drive project. So I'm going to attempt to do that. I don't have any, any big fancy anything to tell you. There has been, obviously, some work done since, since we last talked about Olympian Drive. The consultant told me the other day, they're about 30% done with the plans, you know, putting the plans together to do the project. The reason that they haven't necessarily moved forward in a quicker fashion with the plans is, we've been having discussions with the railroad about the bridge that goes over the railroad. There's been some slight adjustments in the railroad bridge. We had it basically designed to be as, you know, as, as short as could possibly be, in order to, you know, save money. The railroad asked that we expand the bridge about 15 feet in order to accommodate a possible additional rail line that would go under that bridge at some time in the future, whatever that would be used for, whether it's freight, or if it's fast rail, or what have you. So the railroad and the consultant have worked out a plan, and the railroad has basically signed off on the expansion of that bridge. And actually, it was a very minimal cost increase to expand that bridge. We shifted the bridge a little bit, because they wanted the tracks on a certain side of the rail, of the rail, and it actually took us away from some utility conflicts that the original bridge had. So it was a minor increase of cost in the, like, $100,000 range, or somewhere in that, when you're talking about a 16 and a half million dollar bridge. We, I can't say that I began right away negotiations. I did have a meeting. Let me talk a little bit. We have right of way that is coming from the Atkins Group, the Squire Family Farms, and Jim Heimberger's family. The Atkins Group, a right of way is being handled by the City of Champaign. The Heimberger property negotiations are being handled by the City of Urbana, and I am handling the Squire Family Farms piece of it. I had an initial sit-down with the three farm manager, or the three people in the farm management- the Squire Family Farms, and Jim Heimberger's family. The Atkins Group, a right-of-way is being handled by the city of Champaign. The Heimberger property negotiations are being handled by the city of Urbana, and I am handling the Squire Family Farms piece of it. I had an initial sit-down with the three farm managers or the three people in the farm management group with the Squire Family Farms this week and gave them a copy of the appraisal that was done by the IDOT-certified appraiser, along with the Platts and along with other information that is pertinent to beginning negotiations with purchasing or trying to purchase that right-of-way. So actual negotiations, we have our next meeting set for March the nineteenth. One of the farm management team is gonna be gone for a month. So we're taking a month here to allow them to look at all the material that I distributed to them, and then we'll get back together on March the nineteenth and begin actually talking about negotiations for the right-of-way. As of right now, the bid date that is on the books for IDOT, and, you know, there's always lots of potential that those things will move around, but we have it at June of 2013 for Olympian Drive. Once the plans get a little bit more done and we get exactly figured out the whole bridge thing, obviously there will be another public meeting. That was always in the scope of the project is to have another public input meeting to talk about where we've gone since the last time we had our public input meetings. We have a group that is intervening on the Illinois Commerce Commission's petition hearing, which is basically, the Illinois Commerce Commission is the sixteen-and-a-half-million dollars for the bridge over the railroad. There's a hearing process that has to go through before an administrative law judge in order to determine, basically, is it in the public interest to build that bridge and to spend the ICC's money? So there is a group of interveners that have hired a lawyer to, and I'm using the word intervene because that's the official term that they use in the courts, to intervene on the process. And so they will have a seat at the table during the ICC hearing process as well. So that's kind of what we've done since the last time we talked about the Olympian Drive project. The budget at this time has not changed. There's still no need for local money in the project. And I believe the consultant's done enough work to have a pretty good handle on, you know, on what the real number budget should be.
Okay, James?
Jeff, I have a couple of questions. When you say intervene, is that intervene in a positive fashion or intervene in a negative fashion?
I don't know yet, but I could guess.
And then I have to say, when we were talking about this, one of the concerns raised by the landowners in that area were that trucks coming up North Lincoln Avenue would just cruise straight on north there
Right.
and use a road that was not set up to carry them. And finding out that there's a plan for a roundabout there kind of gives me pause because I can't see that helping in that situation where a truck has to go two-hundred-and-seventy degrees around a roundabout where it could go a hundred-and-eighty degrees.
Right.
Is your, is it, in your opinion, is this a good place to put a roundabout, an industrial-supporting road that is expected to have heavy semi-tractor traffic?
The roundabout came out of the public input process. When we talked about the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Olympian Drive, and remember we're really, this is just the Olympian Drive project. We haven't even got started on the Lincoln Avenue project yet. But when we, you know, originally started talking about Olympian Drive, and it was this project and then the project over to forty-five, and everybody said, "You're kind of crazy. You need to consider Lincoln Avenue instead of going all the way over to US Route forty-five because that's a quicker link down to the interstate." And then we went through that, you know, three, four, five public hearings and asked for public comment. We took public votes. We had the boards up and everything where everybody was able to check and make their remarks on the different ideas. The roundabout is what came out of that process. This wasn't anything that our engineers came up with, anything that I came up with. This was something that came out of that public input process is that a roundabout was something that was desired by the people that were at those meetings.
Just to follow up, what I think I've decoded there is that this is not a location that you'd recommend a roundabout for.
I honestly haven't much experience about roundabouts. Never been to a class on them. I'm not, I'm not an expert on them. I do know that the consultants, and we had a, we had a public, during your public participation speaker said, you know, "I've driven around roundabouts. The modern-day roundabouts are much more navigable by trucks and bigger equipment than traffic circles, which is what people perceive as roundabouts." We're not, the current right-of-way is, was always the current right-of-way. We didn't have to expand the right-of-way any great amounts to make a roundabout fit into this intersection. The consultant has actually done a subcontract with a roundabout expert, I believe they're from Wisconsin, to design this thing so that it will definitely accommodate larger trucks and larger vehicles. One of the landowners out there, Mr. Heimberger, was very concerned about getting his farm equipment through the roundabout. And they have actually made a template of exactly the pieces of equipment that he has. And he has some rather large pieces of equipment and showing him that yes, this roundabout will definitely be suitable to move those large pieces of equipment through it. You know, roundabouts are for safety. That's what they're for. You know, you don't need a stoplight at the intersection anymore. It slows people down. There is a multitude of different reports that show that accidents in roundabouts aren't nearly as frequent nor nearly as violent as they are when you have a standard intersection. So is this a good place for a roundabout? I'm not, I'm not an expert. I don't necessarily want to comment about whether it's a good place for a roundabout, but there are definitely good things that roundabouts bring to an intersection like this.
Okay, I have Patsy, McGinnity, Ralph, Stephanie, and then Astra. Okay, Patsy?
Oh, thank you very much.
All right, three questions, or three information questions. Back to the ICC. Do you have any timetable when that sit-down is going to happen? Or have you heard of any timetable?
The next ICC hearing is March twentieth.
March twentieth.
And that's just a pre-hearing. And I'm not all lawyeristic about all this stuff, and I don't really know exactly what all happens. We actually had a pre-hearing on Tuesday. And then at that pre-hearing, they made another pre-hearing. I don't know how many pre-hearings they have. We, you know, the consultant has a lawyer that they're contracting with, and the ICC obviously has lawyers. There's an administrative law judge. IDOT is a party to it because, you know, it's coming through them. We have the interveners who are a party to it. So it depends on the timetable that the administrative law judge puts on the hearings and so forth going forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Second, you mentioned, if I'm remembering what you said, three different land negotiations that are going on. Is that all that you need to work with? Or are there going to be some additional ones besides those three?
Those are the three we need for the Olympian Drive project.
When they go through, then you've got everything that you need. And James sort of went into some of the questions I had about the roundabout, and from your responses to him, that sort of seems set in stone? Or is there room for public input on that actually happening in that area?
I'm quite, I mean, we've had lots of public input. I don't think we're gonna stop now.
But there's public input, and there's public input, so. Okay, thank you very much.
McGinnity?
Jeff, I almost never disagree with you, but I'll tell you what.
Dang it.
Those public hearings, I was there. I was in those sessions.
Yeah.
Specifically about the roundabouts. I remember the dots up on the board. They were about even. But let me drill a little bit deeper. They were specifically, the dots provided on the, for the roundabout side were all from urban representation, and the dots from against the roundabout were all from rural. I asked specifically, and I think the biggest concerns were not only trying to get the machinery through the roundabout, but also just slowing down. They'd rather have the stop signs there and just cook on that road. And so I want to be clear, I'm against it because the rural people are against it because this is a rural area, and it will continue to be a rural area. I want to voice specific opposition to. I'm for roundabouts in all sorts of areas. I think it's a pretty cool concept, especially to relieve congestion, all, safety, I get all of that, but not there. And so, and specific about, the public did not speak on that. In fact, the urban representation, there were a bunch of reps from the city there, you know, and the votes were from one group. And so I want to be clear, I don't think it's very clear at all that the public spoke clearly on that particular issue.
Okay.
Okay, Ralph, and then Stephanie?
But the question I ask, is that decision a made decision or is it still an open, open decision with regard to the roundabout? Are you committed to the roundabout?
I haven't seen a vote by this board that says you're committed to a roundabout. You committed to the project, and the project is in a, in a design phase.
So that roundabout is not yet, as it was put, set in concrete?
We haven't built it yet.
Okay.
Thank you. I concur with Brendan. It's pretty, but it's not conducive to the rural environment. And I think that's what we have to keep in mind when we are looking at roundabouts and, you know, transforming, putting in a road, what is going to be the most conducive use of that road to the people that live in the rural community. Pretty is good. It's attractive. But we have to be mindful of what is going to be the most effective. And I cannot see this roundabout as being a safety, effective, good means of transportation for the people that live in the rural community. I can see it in a city. I think it's very attractive. But it's probably going to be more costly also. So I would, you know, if we're gonna do this roundabout or we're gonna start talking about a roundabout like a price comparison, but as far as I'm concerned, I will not support a roundabout in that rural area.
Okay, Astra?
I agree with Brendan also. I agree with Brendan also, and I would like to point out that actually it's gonna be a T-intersection for we don't know how long. And to put a roundabout for a T-intersection does seem silly. Of concrete, of chip roads, actually.
Okay, Alex, and then Kurtz, and then Jonathan?
I'm gonna be less strenuous in my objection to the roundabout only because I'm not a highway engineer and I don't know the relative cost or the relative safety or those issues. But I think that's my point, is I would be a lot more comfortable if that decision were being made by a highway engineer saying this is the best way to do it, this intersection, not the fact that at some public input session, a majority of people who showed up thought roundabouts were cool.
I tell you, I think, because I'm not a roundabout expert, there's obviously a lot of opinions here. And there was a reason this decision was made. And I'm probably, obviously was not prepared to talk about roundabouts tonight. But I would like to bring in the people that do know why this thing is being constructed, how it's being constructed, what the costs are. I obviously don't sit down at a desk every day and draw roundabouts because we don't have any in Champaign. So if it would, might be a good idea to have Hanson's come in and talk about the procedure that they've gone through to get to this decision and why this decision has been, you know, made to go with a roundabout.
Okay, Kurtz?
Yeah, well, I've done some research on some roundabouts, and they seem to be, as we talked about, much more expensive. And believe it or not, I do agree with Mr. McGinnity on that, those public hearings I also attended, they were primarily from the city of Urbana who was pushing this roundabout and Olympian Drive project. But we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars additional perhaps for the bridge, maybe more. From what I've gleaned, a roundabout could run more than a hundred thousand dollars additional, if that's true. Where is this additional money coming from? We've already committed to a certain amount of dollars and a share of other dollars. And if we're talking now a couple of hundred thousand more, and we continue, and we're not even near halfway of this planning, are you gonna come back to us and ask for another share of fifty or sixty or seventy thousand dollars additional on this project?
We don't have any share in this project right now. We have no money in this project. All we have, no. The Olympian Drive project has no local money in it right now.
Okay, Jeff?
The roundabout will be taken care of by other dollars than our, than this board?
The roundabout is part of the Olympian Drive project.
If a roundabout is a hundred thousand dollars more than a traditional intersection, where are that hundred thousand dollars coming from?
Well, we're making a grand assumption that it is a hundred thousand dollars more, and I don't know that sitting here. So I can't comment on something that I really don't.
Where would any money come from if it's additional dollars?
If there was additional dollars beyond the project budget, it would have to come from somewhere. I don't know where it would come from. It would have to come before this body to have a vote if you guys were gonna pay for it. But right now, we're not outside of the budget of the original project.
Thank you.
Jonathan, and then you, uh...
Thank you, I'm the chair. Just, I'll be brief. Concur with what Mr. McGinnity's memory was. I was there to pin the dots on the chalkboard. He's exactly right, and I agree with him. Thank you.
Okay, Ralph?
I've been listening to a lot of roundabout propaganda in Urbana from the Biden crowd. And they claim loudly and shrilly that roundabouts are less expensive than signalized intersections.
Well...
When you count in the cost of...
When you count in the cost of the signals,
Yeah.
that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, well...
Right.
If you're gonna put, you're certainly not gonna put in a regular intersection out there without signals. Or are you? No.
Well, not for the long term, no. Maybe in the very short term, the traffic might not warrant signals, but in the long term, absolutely.
Least expensive is four-way stops.
Yeah, but the most dangerous as well.
Jeff, pardon me if I came to this discussion a little late. I didn't partake in the Olympian Drive planning or hearings. But I did hear you say that we, the county, has no money in it.
Right.
Is the money in it funds that would be available for the county for other purposes?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, James, and then Pius?
Yeah, I just, I just, from what I'm hearing, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the cost scenario because I believe this is likely to be an intersection that requires a stop sign on either side of Olympian Drive, at least starting out. So a roundabout is gonna be more expensive than that, even though it may be signalized down the road. That's a lot further down the road when that...
Well, I, I think, yeah.
Further to the east perhaps. But I'd like to add my voice to the others that say this is probably not a good place for a roundabout. And if we can encourage the project to drop that add-on or value-engineer it out, I suggest we do.
Okay, Pius?
Let me get back to the agenda and move on. I mean, you just want to report.
Right.
Here's our report, let's move on to something we're actually gonna be working on.
Do we want to report a bigger, a more concise report about the roundabout issue from somebody that is an expert in roundabouts?
So isn't Gary Seaco?
I mean, the costs I can get very simply, but there's a lot of discussion about the need for a roundabout. I could have them, I mean, they could do it in ten, fifteen minutes at the next Cal meeting or at the board meeting or what have you. But I'd probably need to schedule them if that's something that the board desires to have scheduled.
Okay, Patsy?
Just a point of clarification. My takeaway from your comments is that at this juncture, the board has basically no input on whether there'll be a roundabout or not. Is that a correct interpretation of what you said to us?
No. No, I said, you guys approved the original project. There's never been a vote about whether there's gonna be a roundabout there. This is something that's grown out of the project design phase.
Then let's have some, some more description on it at another Cal meeting then, since we might potentially be able to make a comment and be effective about this roundabout.
We're gonna go back to agenda. Aye.
Okay. There's another... There's another piece of paper that I handed out that was a letter from the Village of Fooseland president, and I believe he's here, is he not? It's over there. He came to answer any questions you might have. And there's also a, a map attached to that with yellow and red colors on it. And as well as, as well as redoing the road between Fisher and Fooseland, the Village of Fooseland actually has maintenance and jurisdiction of the roadway. If you look on your map, the red roadway that goes through Fooseland, which is an extension of County Road Six. And as you can see from the letter that I received from Dale Sedbury, Village President, they receive approximately $2,500 a year in motor fuel tax to do road maintenance and repair within the Village of Fooseland. And they have asked if the county would take over the maintenance and jurisdiction of the roadway through Fooseland, which is the main road, which Lamar Street going down into Second Street there in Fooseland. Right, currently, it's an asphalt roadway that's in need of rehabilitation. Obviously, we're going to be in the area this summer. It's, it is, you know, a extension of our county highway. There's some pretty good-sized grain bins over on the western side of Fooseland, and there's quite a bit of truck traffic, I would assume, that goes in and out of those grain bins. And I've estimated in the, in the area of about $80,000 to $100,000 to do a mill and an overlay through Fooseland, to be able to rehabilitate that roadway through Fooseland.
So moved.
So what I'm, I guess, what I'm asking is, we have to go through a jurisdictional transfer process like we did when we transferred the road in Gifford. So what, and IDOT has actually concurred that they would approve this jurisdictional transfer if we were to submit all the paperwork. I haven't gone ahead and done that, because I wanted to have some guidance from the board before I went through and did the formal jurisdictional transfer papers. But it would come back before the board, it would go to the village for their vote, and then it would ultimately go to IDOT. And it would probably take two, three months to get it all processed if, if you guys desired that we take over the maintenance and jurisdiction of that roadway.
Can we get a strong vote on who would be in agreement of this?
Chair, could I ask a question first? Jeff, what's the state, what's the status of the road beyond Fooseland? I mean, that, that continues through, and that runs down toward Lotus, right? What's, is that a county highway?
Township road. It's a township, township road.
Okay, so this would be the, this would just, the county highway currently ends at the...
It ends at the eastern limits, it would end at the southern limits of Fooseland now. So it would go through town, make the bend, and go down to the southern limits of Fooseland.
Okay, let's get the straw.
And it's roughly a half mile, a little bit more than a half mile.
I mean, Esther?
Are you saying about these grain bins that the damage to the road is not caused by the people in Fooseland, but by...
And Dale, could, could we have, just have the village president speak quickly about the condition of the roadway and who uses it and so forth, if that's okay?
There is a contractor and a farmer that lives just west of town, and they're the one, they own the elevator. It's not privately, it's not owned by Alliance Green or somebody like that. They move a tremendous amount of heavy equipment as a contractor, plus they farm several thousands of acres, not only in, in Champaign County, but over McLean County. So they move a lot of heavy equipment on that road almost daily.
And as you saw from the RCP report, there was 100 people in Fooseland, so they just don't have the fiscal, you know, ability to keep up that roadway with that kind of heavy equipment traveling across there.
Fatsy?
Information question. Do you have any guesstimate, then, if we take over the jurisdiction of this road, what this will be adding to your highway budget in the way of future maintenance and plowing in the wintertime, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, we kind of plow through there now and turn around in there, so that's not going to add, yeah. As far as maintenance goes, we haven't done anything to that road since 1985. So, you know, you can count on doing some crack sealing and some steel coating and coming back in 25 years and rehabilitating it again.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Maxwell?
Jeff, correct me, but wasn't the entire length from Route, what is that, 47 over to the west side of Fooseland, wasn't that state maintenance at one time?
At one time, yes.
And so when the jurisdictional transfer was made back in the 80s, we acquired the rural portion at the village limits, and basically the state dumped the urban portion onto the Village of Fooseland.
Yeah, actually, the road going south that Mr. Alex referred to, out of Fooseland, used to be a county road as well, and it got reverted back to a township road. So things have really changed around up there in the last 25 years.
Okay, Alex, and then John.
I'm sorry, Jeff, this wasn't clear from the action item we voted on earlier with regard to County Highway Eight. Is that proposal to rehabilitate this part through Fooseland as well, or not?
No, I would have to bring another resolution for, for that particular part. I didn't include that in the original resolution.
Okay, is the timeliness of, would the timeliness of the transfer be such that it itself would be considered?
Absolutely. That's why we're bringing it this time, because we'd like to do it all while we're up there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I think, in all honesty, this is really an appropriate use of county funds. These folks don't have another answer to this problem. They are part of our county. I think it's a good place for us to step up and do the right thing.
Okay, seeing no more conversation about this, let's take a straw vote, see who is willing to take over jurisdiction of this road. unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Would it be okay if I put together the jurisdictional transfer papers for the board meeting this month? Is that okay, since this was on here for information? That would get it moving as quickly as possible, so that we could get this thing going.
Our next board meeting is a week from tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll try to get everything so that it can be here. What is it, February 23rd is the board meeting? Yeah, so I'll try, I'll get it together and bring it back at that time, then. Okay.
Okay, next we'll go into other business. And one thing on other business that we need to discuss is, one of the board members wanted to talk about the conference that you were at.
Yeah. There was a request just for me to give a report on my out-of-state travel, and I did go to Washington DC on January, the 18th through the 20th, to represent the National Association of County Engineers on what is called the National Committee on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And this is not a meeting that anybody goes to, because they want to have any fun. You go there to work, actually. And I've been on the National Committee of Uniform Traffic Control Devices for 15 years. I was appointed by the president when I was in Minnesota and continued with that role when I came here to Champaign. I've moved up into the executive committee and am now the chairman of the National Association's delegation, and have been for the last eight years. I sit on the Temporary Traffic Control Committee, which is basically the committee that makes suggestions to the Federal Highway Administration about signs and other apparatuses that are in basically construction zones, the, the orange-colored signs. This committee has done wonderful work. We usually have about 250 people at each meeting, and there's an executive committee meeting that I sit on for the executive board. And some of the things that we did at the last meeting, I think you probably all heard about the, the new retro-reflectivity standards for signs, as well as the retro-reflectivity standards for pavement markings, and FHWA's mandate that those all be handed down, not only to this, the state, but the cities and counties and the townships. And this committee, although we feel that that's, you know, it's something that desperately needs to be done for the safety of, of the traveling public, we, we've tried to make FHWA understand that there's only so much money out there. And to mandate that and put that upon every public agency in the United States is a, is a very costly mandate to have. So we've actually made some headway with FHWA whereby they have published a new rule where, obviously, if you replace the sign or replace the markings, you're going to have to upgrade them. But you don't just have to go out and upgrade everything just because the new rule says you have to be, have to upgrade things. There's also a lot of verbiage. If you've ever seen the National Committee manual, it's about this thick. And some of these gentlemen have been on this committee for 30 or 40 years. And there is very, very particular language in the manual that gives, I guess, makes our jobs harder to do. So pretty much the focus of this, of these meetings that I go to is to try to kind of pick those things and make sure that I'm representing the rural voice. So there's a lot of things that might be good in a, in a city area, but when you apply them out into the rural areas, they really don't make sense. And FHWA, in their ultimate wisdom, the last time they published the manual, in the manual, their standards, and standards basically mean you shall. That's what a standard says. You shall do this, you shall do that. And FHWA came out with a little sentence right in front of the manual that said, standards cannot be changed or, or anything done to them based on engineering judgment or engineering studies. So they basically said, the standard's a standard, you either live by it or you're basically going to have to go to court. So we've been fighting that fight for the last year, and we actually have won that fight as well against FHWA. So this committee does some marvelous things. There's a lot of strength in this committee, and it's something that I'm proud to serve on and will continue to go to the meetings.
Okay, any other business that needs to come in front of this committee? Okay, if not, we're going to go to the designated items on the consent agenda, it'll be B, C, D, E, F, and H. And that's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is obviously, let's take a three or four-minute break quick. People can go to bathroom, buy some chips, drink some coffee, whatever, stretch, and Mr. Bets will take over the helm.
Mr. Kurtz and other folks, I'm glad everyone stayed.
We have a relatively short agenda, but I don't think we will use a short degree of time, because there's a lot of things that are interesting on the agenda. Some that are non-controversial, some that are perfectly controversial. I'm glad people were patient, and some folks have stayed. That's, that's a good thing. The first item that we have is A, the physical plant FY 2011 year-end budget report. It's brain hard.
Thank you. On page 40 of your agenda packet, we finally have our final expenditure report showing that the physical plant finished at 99% of its original budget. The utilities kept us, kept us where we were at, and if you look at the numbers down through the repair and maintenance line items, you can see that from our original budget to what we actually had to finish budgeting, we were quite a bit, well, we need to take a serious look at our repair and maintenance line items for these buildings in the future. Page 41 is the current expenditure report for this year. There's nothing new or exciting on that to tell you about. You'll notice the courthouse repair and maintenance, right out of the gate, we're at 19%, but we just renewed two large annual maintenance contracts with security systems and monitoring And the following two pages are the gas, gas and electric utilities, with very little information on them yet. As you remember, we are three months behind on our billing cycles with the paperwork to time, so before it gets reported to this board. Any questions?
Any questions? I entertain a motion to receiving place on file the physical plant report and the physical plant monthly report. That was a motion by Ms. Adams and a second by Ms. Petrie. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. The Arbartel Construction and East Campus Water Management Project update, since in courthouse we're still.
Okay, on page 45, once again, that's just the current updated spreadsheet for the project budget. Nothing new this month shown on there, I don't believe. And as far as the East Campus Stormwater Management Project update, very light communication with Burns, Clancy Associates. They're getting the documents off to all the utility companies, once again, to make the official request for easement knowledge and get all the stuff together so that they can start putting the documents together for the bidding process.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to receiving place on files, items C and D? Yes. Mr. Langenheim moved, seconded by Mr. Quisenberry. Question by Ms. Adams.
On the maintenance area build-out for new building, is that the new turnkey building we built out for the coroner's office?
Yes, that would accommodate a coroner's office, election storage, and maintenance facility. Yes, that is it.
Mr. James?
When will everybody be moving in?
Everybody is in, is completely occupied.
Is it really?
Yes.
Geez, I gotta get out more.
Actually, both the coroner and the county clerk are planning an open house, so you will all be receiving an invitation to that. I believe it's scheduled tentatively for February 28th.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carries. The sound system.
CV Lloyd and Company really came out of the gate fast on this project. They were on-site Friday evening, working, and following Saturday, after the county board approved and signed the contract, they have a tentative three-and-a-half weeks scheduled to complete. If all the equipment gets in on time, they're already one-third of the way through with sound system modifications and upgrades for, for the courtrooms that were vacant last week. We have a scheduled walkthrough, just an update, this Friday afternoon. They are working four-to-12 shift this week, as, as their original proposal's scheduled. So things are moving well there.
Any other, any questions? Before we move on, I wanted to make a comment, and that is, I want to thank Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Alex for all of the work they did on that project. It was very, very useful, and I think they deserve the thanks, certainly of the chair and of the board, for all of the effort that they put into this. So I want to express that. Thank you. Anything further? Okay. What I'm going to do now is, we're under item F, there's one, two. I'm going to go to two, because item one is absolutely irrelevant if we don't do anything on item two. So I would entertain a motion to approve a release of RFP for consultant services for needs assessment and pre-design planning.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Langenheim, seconded by Mr. O'Connor. That's certainly, discussion. Mr. Weibel?
My assumption is, what you're going to do is, you're going to ask for, this is to find out if people are interested in working on this project, correct? To be very general about it?
It will be an RFP for a specific service, and based upon the responses, a single vendor will be selected to conduct the needs assessment and pre-design planning for the county's jail space.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor? Thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
Well, I wonder if I'm the only one that thinks we might, it would be appropriate to split this issue and vote on the consultant services for needs assessment as a separate yea or nay before we spend any money on pre-design and planning?
Just to be clear, the pre-design planning is only to put the needs assessment into basically bubble diagrams so that you have something to provide to an architectural engineering firm which you would be selecting at a later date in a different step in the process. You don't need an architect or an engineer to do that. A jail consultant can do that. A jail consultant is typically going to be less expensive to provide that documentation and information than an architect would be or an engineer. So this is following the recommendation of the National Institute of Corrections in how to plan a new institution and this is the recommended first step in moving into that planning.
Ms. Ammons?
I want to address a couple of things. First of all, that were brought up in public participation and I think that needs to be put on the table before we began talking about consulting services and RFPs and this design bill. The, in the packet, the timeline that is given to the board members makes the automatic assumption that we're going to build a jail. And so when the committee of stakeholders went to Colorado, the initial conversation in the Democratic caucus, and I'd like for us to go back and pull the minutes, was that we were going on a research mission to find out options only, not necessarily an A to Z plan to building a jail, which we've incorporated here. The other thing is that the assumption again is that it's appropriate to try to bypass the public's involvement and input here and ignore the comments from the public. I think that is also inappropriate. And then lastly, the, the referendum, which will be put for, before this board to accept a timeline guide, which is on your desk tonight, as to how you might pay for this. The initial article that was written and several resolutions for the tax itself were supposed to be repealed. And then, of course, this board in 2003, outside of the public's involvement, decided to repeal the sunset clause out of the public safety sales tax. I think if there's going to be a project, first and foremost, the public needs to weigh in on its own scope of the project and what it would like to see done with its money before we began to pre-plan a design. My experience on this board, and I'll be done in November as a board member, but certainly I'll be involved as a citizen. My involvement in this board has been that whatever is put forward in front of us from the administration and the process, i.e. this timeline, seems to get the go-ahead and all of a sudden it's out of the public view, outside of the one or two articles we might get out of the news gazette on this issue. But the public's issue has been largely ignored in this process. What I'm asking the county board to do is to step back for a second, ask that there is a timeline similar to what this project-based timeline gives you, and set up around the entire county, set up public debate on this issue, period. And separate the public debate from the facilities maintenance that is necessary now. Separate those two issues. The downtown jail, which I know people that are in it and who have contacted me, of whom I've spoken to recently, want the issues of maintenance addressed. We want those issues addressed and we don't want to wait to 2015 to address them. But the extension of the jail, the expansion of the jail, needs to go back to public debate. And this board, I don't believe, has the right, even though you may have the legislative ability to ignore the public. I don't think it's the moral responsibility of the board to ignore the impact in the African-American community and the impact on poor people in the county and not take this issue back to them. And I understand that people don't like this whole soapbox approach, but I think that it needs to be considered. And then lastly, it's very clear that stakeholders on this project planning team obviously have a stake in doing so. There is no dissenting voice and there's no African-American or Latino representation on this facility committee or planning team that unfortunately Mr. Betts has put together. And I think that that is absolutely disgusting.
Point of order from the chair. Mr. Betts did not put it together.
So who put this together? I, I like to ask, who put this planning team together?
I did not put it together.
But I'm asking officially, who put this planning team together?
There is, you received a report in October from the week-long session that four of us attended at the National Institute of Corrections for planning of new institutions. And in that report, we reported that Phase One needs assessment project team was to be developed. And the very people who are on this team that you're looking at tonight are the membership that was recommended by the National Institute of Corrections to be on a project team for planning a new institution.
They have no authority to set a planning team for Champaign County.
We are following a model. We went to a training.
And that model is not approved by this board. This board has not adopted a model that we should follow from Colorado. We've not adopted a model. And if we're going to adopt a model, I'm fine with that. We should discuss adopting a model.
Mr. Langenheim?
First of all, we all appear agreed that the downtown jail must be corrected. This is a request for consultant service, a needs assessment, a pre-design planning, and how to accomplish that. It has nothing to do with the committee. There's no reason not to go ahead. We need to know what we're about. And Lord knows it's a complicated problem because we've been talking ad infinitum, ad nauseam about it for the last few meetings. So I would urge this board to approve the release of an RFP for consultant services. And then we can discuss who we want on this committee. If this board wants to change that committee or add to it, we're able to do that. That's the next order of business. But it, that order of business comes after we've decided to go ahead and do something about our problem. If we don't do something about this problem, it'll only be a matter of time until we are ordered to do it by the state or by other authority or until we have a major disaster in that downtown jail.
Stephanie Holderfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things that I did want to point out. In this proposal, at the very end on page 47, on 12/20 of 2012, if this plan isn't something that the county board would like to pursue, the county board determines not to proceed and the architect, engineer, the project ends. So I want to make sure that everyone has reviewed that and seen that the county board will make the decision whether or not to move forward. If they do not, the project ends. So I, I'm glad to see that that was added to the proposal. And then I did ask Sheriff Walsh about, I know there's a lot of public concern about mental health and the medical facilities that we currently have in the jail and if those items, those areas were going to be addressed as part of a redesign of some sort. And he did assure me that that is going to be a part of some type of redesign because we know, having listened to many people with many concerns on the conditions of the county jail, both the downtown and the satellite, that there is a huge concern, not only for, which I think someone made mention, for the corrections officers, but it's, it's also for the, the inmates there. And Carol, I understand your passion. I do. And you're not alone. We all care and we all want to make sure that we're going to make the right decision. And, you know, the experiences that people are having in the jail, we want to make sure that they are heard, which I believe here in public participation, people are voicing their concern. So to say that, I, I think, isn't quite fair. And believe it or not, I care and I think everybody else here on the board cares. We want to make sure that we have the best community that we possibly can have. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Carter was next.
Well, I'm going to have to address this to Deb because Carol asked a question and it wasn't answered properly because, probably because you don't have that authority and you know it and nobody else. But you know, I'm disappointed my county chair. He is the guy that's supposed to make these decisions and Mr. Betts. Those are two key chairperson. And for me myself, I, I, I just feel awful bad that you all let something happen when you know. That was you all due to to set this agenda, not, not nobody else. Colorado is nobody else. This is Champaign, Alabama. We don't know what's going on in Colorado. We don't know how they make their money over there, really. And for somebody to try to dump us, this is a shame. It's really a shame. And what you done, last meeting, when we had the meeting about the jail, when we left here, we had consensus that you was going to allow everybody, all the public taxpayers who had something to say, to do that. Now middle of the week, I have somebody call me and say, hey, you're not, no, that's out now. You have a committee going to railroad that right on through. Now, I want to ask you personally, how you feel, Deb, when, when you asked me up here as a board member for my support, to support you, Tom, and Mr. Pies, to support you, and then I look and see this kind of crap going on. How you think I feel? This, this is totally ridiculous. You know, how can, who, who is represented here? Who is represented? You look at this and this, this is really terrible. It's really terrible. And you ought to be ashamed to put this on agenda like this. You got one, then you put all of these items and way down to two.
I hate that.
It's, it's a trick, man. Again.
Point of order.
And it's just ridiculous. So now I have to go back to my constituents and the tactic is you are not going to have no chance to come out and give your say to this jailhouse project. It, it's awful. And, and you, you're getting where, who can you trust anymore? You come up here and earnest, when I sit up here, I try to do things from my heart. And when I see this buddy, it tears it apart. And I'm going to tell you, I have a damn feeling towards the people that concocted this deal up here. I do.
Mr. James, did you have an inquiry?
Yeah, I guess I do. We were talking about the RFP, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments, but sometimes I wish we would stick to the subject and then move to other comments if you could do like Pies does and hit your gavel. But with the RFP, my question would be, it's a request. Deb, is there any dollar amount that you have in your mind or any figure that we're looking at that we're going to set for that RFP when it, or is that going to be discussed when it comes back?
I don't think you'll actually know the dollar amount of the consulting services until you get the responses to the RFP and are looking at entering into a contract, which is definitely a decision that will be made by the county board.
And that's where I was going with that because then once that would come back, they would outline what their cost and what they plan on doing.
Scope of services.
And this board at that point could say, that's way more than we want to spend. We want to do something else. So what I'm trying to get at is we're hearing all this rhetoric at this point, which some of it is awful interesting. Don't get, don't get bug eyed with me there, Lloyd. It's awful interesting, but we need to stay on the subject because we all tend to want to grandstand and we need to stay on the subject. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. James. And it's a point well taken. Ms. Burksen is, is next.
Because needs assessment is very much a matter of which side of the table you're sitting on, I would ask that in the evaluation of this RFP, if we pass it, the African-American community, the mental health community, and maybe the academic experts were well represented.
Certainly when the RFP is drafted, you can, when it comes back to the board, say, I think these people should be consulted. You are the board that makes that decision.
I'm talking about evaluating the responses to the RFP. I think we need a broad base room for that.
Well, that's up to the board as well. I will tell you that statutorily, the board is the one with the sole authority to enter into a contract. It is not something that is enjoyed by the general public. They can weigh in, but they do not have a vote on it unless they get elected to this board. But I respect where you're, you're coming from. Mr. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This isn't probably going to be very popular, but I think one of the things that we need to do before we go too far down this road is understand that the board, this board, the county board, does not decide who goes to jail and who doesn't go to jail. Our only responsibility is to provide a place for people who are incarcerated to go, for the sheriff or whoever that might be. We do not have the authority or the mechanism to do the social programs that's being asked us to do. That's not our place and that's not what we should be doing. So I think we need to get our, our focus on what do we do next? And it appears to me that this needs assessment needs to be done, whether we refurbish the downtown jail or whether we build a, a satellite jail or whether we do nothing. But that needs to be done. We need to focus on what we can do and not what would be nice to do.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. And Ms. Anderson?
Well, I, I sit here thinking that last week, when we had the discussion, that at the end of that, Carol, I think particularly, was asking that until we had some figures and some plans, we really couldn't make a decision about whether we wanted to remodel or whether we wanted to move out. And if, and that it seemed like there was consensus to move forward in that. And I don't see how we can move forward unless we have the assessment and come up with some ideas and figures to wrestle with. So it seems like this is the next, next move in getting to those, those figures and how we can make our decision.
Mr. Maxwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had some problems being clear what we want in our RFPs in the past. I think we should spend some time to make sure we're going to ask the right questions in the RFP, what we want, possibly even bring it back for review to the board and see if we want to ask those questions in the RFP.
And let me tell you, it will be brought back because that's the only way we can do it. The, a RFP will be drafted, it will be circulated, it will go to this board. There will be an opportunity for board members to suggest, this is something we want, this is something we don't want, et cetera. That is a standard part of the RFP process that we do. Some people participate very actively in it, some people do not. But it is the right of board members to suggest things in RFPs, so long as the stuff's lawful and within the scope of the, the services that you're seeking. Mr. Quisenberry?
So, so Tom, does that mean that the, the wording on this item number two should be the approval of the construction of an RFP as opposed to releasing it?
I think that would be more correct. It's going to come back to the board.
That's fine. The way the purchasing policy reads, the board authorizes the release of an RFP. Since you don't have, we, it's a task to write this RFP, so I think we would like to have direction to know that before we take the time to write this RFP, that the board is interested in releasing the RFP. The board doesn't always necessarily have the RFP to review. It depends. Some are more technical than others, but in this case, it makes perfect sense. And so our goal was to have the RFP written, if you authorize going forward with this tonight, written so that you could have it in advance of the February 23rd board meeting to provide any comments and input. And if you're ready to release it at that point, fine. And if you're not, then we would continue working on it until the next Cal meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Ammons?
I want to go back and, and separate issues. Again, we continue to talk about Again, we continue to talk about fixing downtown as the only option is a pre-designed plan. So we're talking about these things together as if they are one and the same, and that's the only direction we can go. The other thing is, Ms. Anderson is correct. When I asked for an RFP to be released, or that study is more specific, I asked for a cost assessment of the repairs of downtown in comparison to building everything from scratch, including personnel costs and any additional costs that will be included with a new facility. That's what I asked for. I did not ask for a pre-planning team. That is what the NIC asked for. Again, separate issue, Mr. Maxwell made it clear that we are moving in a direction of developing RFP, which is true from my time on the board. Most people don't give input to RFPs, so whatever they come back with, they select a firm, they say, hey, that's how you go off and you're running. There's been no discussion at all at this meeting or anywhere else. The assumption is to fix downtown, you gotta build. To fix downtown, you have to build. That's the messaging propaganda. Fix downtown, you gotta build. And if we request, meaning the black community and the community of color requests, that this board considers impact analysis, which there's much research for the board members to look at on this issue, beyond just facility, if you are really interested. So don't give me the I'm interested, I care discussion, because we've had a lot of that, and I don't care how many people don't like my comments and want to address them. There are two issues here. We got this from the board saying that there was maintenance concerns with downtown. We all received the maintenance concerns. We did. There was water coming down from the pipes. I walked through the jail two or three times myself. There were other issues with rodents. There's exterior damage to the building. We got all of those maintenance issues, but not once has this board said, let me see what we can fix on this issue. Let me separate that from the expansion. But we're saying, it's all one and the same. Let's release an RFP so we can see what we can buy, instead of dealing with how much does it cost to fix what the problem is? What is the problem downtown? Can we fix it? We've not voted on that, had any discussion on it, and most board members don't want to at all. They just want to release an RFP, get a consulting company, build all these coffers up, and build this new building. And I think that that is the process that we have on this project planning sheet that's right in your packet today, with a continuous line as well as funding options. I think we are moving well beyond where we should. And I'll just say for Mr. Jay, what we can control, what we do control, even if you care nothing about the impact in the communities. What you do control is the court of sense. This board controls the court of sense sales tax and can change it whenever they get ready and can put it back on the agenda if you so choose. So that's what you do control, is the money mechanism, and you can design the scope based on how much money you want to spend.
Mr. Alex.
I've heard some great comments tonight from the public as well as members of the board. I just continue to be impressed by most of the feedback that we're getting on this. And I think Ms. Emmons actually did an excellent job of framing this. There's really some completely separate but related issues here. I mean, I think the thing that's on the table and the reason this is in the facilities section of the agenda is that we have a facilities problem. And stated very succinctly, the facilities problem is that the downtown jail was built on the cheap. I think people who were on the board at the time are willing to probably concede that, and is probably nearing the end of its useful life. I think the operative words here on the agenda are jail space improvement, and that's what we're talking about here. I mean, I think that we need to issue an RFP so that we can get a consultant in here to look at what the needs actually are and look at what our potential solutions are. I mean, one option is improving the downtown jail. One option is building additional capacity at the satellite facility and closing the downtown jail. I mean, a terrific option would be no build if somebody can explain to us how to do it. I think it's correct that we need to get out front of the problem. I've heard a lot of comments about we're trying to ram this through, we have our mind made up, you know, we're ready to start pouring concrete. Mr. Aaron Emmons said, you know, we don't know the price tag of what the price tag would be to fix the existing jail. I think we're all in agreement on that. I think that's sort of the whole point of doing this RFP. I think, I am not real enthusiastic about the language pre-designed planning. I think Ms. Emmons raises the point that that may be premature, and I think I agree with that. I mean, I think the design, I'm in favor of this, if the idea of design is designing a solution to the problem. If the idea of design is, we're gonna design a downtown, a new jail, and that's the only way we're gonna go, then I think that the language could use some work. This is being called expansion. Again, staying on the issue of the facilities, it's not clear to me whether anything that's being considered is expansion. I mean, the downtown jail is 75% empty right now. The issue is not overcrowding. I think a gentleman made a comment about overcrowding, and with respect to your enthusiasm, I think that's a comment that may not entirely reflect the reality of what's actually going on in Champaign County. I mean, we have a lot of jail space that we're not using. We're not using it because the configuration isn't acceptable. We can't practically house women at the satellite jail. Satellite jail is inadequate for housing inmates with the type of mental health issues that we're seeing now. And these are basically issues of where the space is located, how it's configured. I think to say that we're, you know, we need to expand the jail is not an accurate statement. I think, again, going back to something that Ms. Emmons made, I think is an important point. I think we need to look at, in addition to the long term, I mean, no matter what we do here, any significant construction project or significant rehabilitation of the downtown jail is still several years off at this point. And I would like to see some of this planning process also focused on shorter term issues, whether there's anything we can do in the meantime to increase, to improve the conditions at the downtown jail, and quite frankly, coming up with contingency plans or evaluating contingency plans that we may already have to determine what we would do in the event that we have to make a decision sooner to close the downtown jail, or if somebody comes in and tells us that we have to close the downtown jail, which I think is not outside the realm of possibility. So I guess the bottom line, that's what I see as a facilities issue, and I don't see any reason not to support issuing this RFP so we can get somebody in here to help us figure out what our problems are and what our options are. I do agree with Ms. Burksen that this project team is pretty down the line from the law enforcement side. It wouldn't be a bad idea to include some mental health professionals, to include somebody, a medical professional, to include some of the people in the organizations that are providing services to people in the jail, so that we can make sure that they can weigh in as well, whether they're formally on the committee or whether their input is listed. I think that's gonna be crucial as we decide, as we identify the problems and figure out how to solve them. I have some more comments related to what I see as the other big issue on the table, which is this justice issue, but I'm gonna take them up when we get to item four on the agenda.
Mr. McGinty.
Well, as usual, Chris provides a terrific analysis of where I think that we are. I'm for release of the RFP. I don't need to restate why, because I think Chris did an excellent job of that. I want to address the issue of tone as we go forward with this, because I think it is an important issue. One misinterpretation, I think, is it's not clear at all at this point that we're talking about any expansion. I sure am not. I'm in learn mode here. I am trying to take in this information. I'm extremely interested in what the public has to say. You can believe that or not, if you choose to, Carol, but, you know, I have the floor. Excuse me.
I didn't speak to you. Why would you call my name? Speak to the chair.
I don't even need to say anything else. I think that that speaks for itself. Thank you.
Mr. Esri.
I would just like, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to say that Mr. Alex, I think, did a good job of stating it, and I guess I would, my assumptions would be, and we can definitely spell them out, that to address like the downtown jail needing work right now, I would assume that if we would go along and remodel the downtown, that would, part of that process would be to fix the issues such as the outside. That would be included in it. Now, maybe kind of keep some of those things separate so that, should we decide not to do anything, we are gonna have, if we don't do anything, we're gonna be stuck with the downtown jail as it is, but it does need some work. So when it comes to prices, we have a price for remodeling the downtown jail, but there's a separate little price package over here that includes all the work that needs to be done, such as the tuck pointing on the brick. So that, okay. We aren't gonna do, we aren't gonna build anything at the satellite. We aren't gonna remodel, but this is what we need to fix the downtown jail. Something needs to be done at the downtown, and granted, some of it may be even quicker than the timeframe for the building that we're looking at doing, but I would hope, I mean, I don't know why you would remodel the interior and wouldn't fix the exterior. That doesn't make sense at all. So to me, it only makes sense that you would include any other repairs at the same time that you would even think about remodeling the inside, if that was the way we would choose to go. Thank you.
Ms. Stephanie, hold your phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Mr. Esri. I think that what you've stated is exactly how I am seeing this. You know, there's that saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, it's broken, and we need to fix it. And how else are we going to fix the problem if we don't get a deeper understanding of how to do it, how to go about it? I'm not ready to spend one dime, not one dime, until we get those questions answered. We cannot spend any money on this until we know. No one is saying we're building. My concern is that the facility that we currently have is in disrepair. It's unsafe. I want the inmates to have safety. I want them to have the medical facility that they need, as well as the mental health care that they need. These are the problems we need to fix. I'm not interested in increasing the number of beds. We have enough there. Also, I think statistically, someone had shown me that statistically, in like counties, we have the lowest rate of incarceration. So I'm not really sure where these higher numbers are coming from, but as a comparison, we do have lower numbers for incarceration. I'm not interested, again, in increasing the size. I want to fix what's broken so that we can get the help that's needed for the building and for the inmates that are there.
Ms. Michaels.
Excuse me? I guess as I read this, and, you know, there's lots of comments going everywhere, and if you sit back and listen to them, you can, you know, kind of go back one way and the other, depending on what you feel like. But I have a problem with the pre-designed planning portion of this approval to release RFP. I do see that there are two different issues here, and I think that if we have maintenance needs, and that's part of this needs assessment, in our existing facilities, we have a maintenance area, we have a facilities director, and I would see that mainly those would be met by in-house, and maybe some of these things can be done in-house before we have to send an RFP out, if I'm looking at this too simply. Maybe that's because I just want to try to make it as easy as possible for everybody and also save the taxpayers some dollars at this point, because we do have some other hot issues that we need to take care of. So I just have a little bit of problem with this pre-designed plan. It almost says that we are gonna rebuild or restructure with some larger dollar issues than some general maintenance.
Bucie, could you respond to that?
And the sheriff may be able to embellish on this, but pre-designed planning is really, the needs assessment determines what your needs are. The pre-designed planning is to talk about, for mental health, for example, what kind of design will best accommodate the needs of those who are served in a mental health area of the facility. And we're gonna know we need kitchen space, we need space for education programs, we need space for the individuals to exercise, and the pre-designed planning is intended to put those spaces in consideration of how they need to be located with regards to adjacencies, what parts of those spaces can be shared. So in other words, an educational space can be shared by two different pods, based on how scheduling is done, which is all part of the needs assessment. So it's just all part of putting together a big picture of what the needs are to best serve those who are in the facility, and how those spaces relate to each other and should therefore be, you know, spatially, you know, related to each other and located. It doesn't draw out the locations. It just gives the concepts of those spaces and how they relate to each other. And do you want to add to that?
Sure. Matt? Yes.
You all have said it real well. Why don't you use your mic for recording?
Yeah.
You said it real well, Deb. I'm hoping we can get a pre-planner who can also give us some idea in terms of diagrams. She's right. You start with bubble diagrams. What do you want? And how does it all interact? And then what's the security issue? And you just said like a classroom. Well, if you put a classroom in the middle of two pods, you can share it. You can use the classroom for church. It goes into all these different things, and Stephanie and I think Mr. Alex also mentioned. Look at what I gave you. This isn't something I'm gonna do on my own. I never intended to. Do intend to involve the people that deliver these services. The ladies that were here last week, the mental health and medical, they're the ones who really need to sit with the planner and say, this is what I think I need for the population we have now. And I'll make this clear enough. I don't control who comes in jail. I wish I could. If the superintendent and I had our weight the way we wanted, there'd be 100 less prisoners there tomorrow morning. And you've got several options before you, and I'm sorry if I repeated what you all said, but I want you to hear it from me, because this is what I'm, have one option, simply fix what's wrong with the downtown jail, keep that same structure, that same design. Personally, I think that's a bad idea, but let's let somebody else look at it. Maybe you can remodel the downtown. I'm hoping a planner can look and say, John, the engineer did, yeah, this can be in your footprint. And maybe they'll say, well, and then, of course, you have the option to just move it to the satellite. And then you have the other option is to say, we're gonna add one bed, or we're gonna add 1,000 beds. That's your choice. I just want to say one thing that don't get off of here. You know, a couple of people said, well, Sheriff, you want to do this to make money. You know, you're gonna run out of space. I only offer that if you folks decide, we want to build an extra 10 beds, and we aren't gonna fill it. Well, I want to come back to you and say, here is an option if you want some money. I have no personal stake in this. People said I got a political agenda, or I'm gonna make money, or I want to have a nicer office. You folks, a lot of you've seen my office. I don't particularly care what my office.
Ms. Petrie is next.
Okay, thank you very much. I was so impressed with how effective public participation was in creating a roundabout for the Olympian Drive. I'm gonna try to get us back to some of the comments that the public has made and see if we can integrate this into this process and tie together some of the concerns that have been expressed by my fellow county board members on how this is happening. I would like to hear responses from Ms. Bucie and Chair Betts as to the possibility of adding certain categories of individuals to this project team, if that's a possibility, the possibility of, once a RFP proposal is brought to the board, no, let me back up first, before a proposal is written, the possibility of taking into account some of these comments that have, these very constructive comments that were made, especially this evening, on some of the things that they would like to see happening in relationship to potential scenarios. The sheriff just mentioned three potential scenarios that could be part of what's included in the proposal for the RFP, and how we can then bring that back so it's not just board input, but also plenty of public participation time at a board meeting or at a Cal meeting so that the public can comment and... at a, um, a com meeting, so that the public can come, can comment, and that we will take those comments seriously, and where there is merit, integrate them into how the final proposal for the RFP, uh, is written. It's very clear to me that we're not going to get public meetings done before this RFP is written, so I'm trying to figure out other ways to do it. And then the last aspect is, in this timetable that is in our packet, uh, I am taking that as just a cognitive scaffolding of what are the things that we have to look at down the line in this process, and that these dates are not etched in stone. And one of these dates that's in here is the length of time for a, putting out the RFP and then, uh, making a decision on the RFP, which is approximately, uh, two months, or a little less than two months. And at a minimum, that should be three months to do that, and maybe even a little bit longer, but I would go for three months. So, I'd like to hear comments back from the two of you on some of the ways that we might begin to integrate some of these concerns in moving forward on this issue.
On your last comment, in, in terms of things written in stone, I agree with you. I think it's a very aggressive agenda, uh, in terms of a timeline, and I think even the sheriff would agree, agree with me. That's a tough agenda, and I am not convinced that it can be done in that timeframe, but you have to put something out, and I think time is going to tell whether we're going to be able to meet those timelines. You have to set some sort of goal. If you just leave it blank, you are going to be in the twilight zone and never get anywhere. With, with regard, well, you know, the, the board always has the authority. You are the board. Um, with regard to the, the other issue in terms of the scope, again, I think the sheriff did it perfectly well. There is nothing in this RF, RFP proposal that in any way excludes the downtown, the, um, satellite. What we're looking at is space needs and how they fit in. The board ultimately decides, when, when a report comes back, does it fit? Does it fit anywhere? Does it fit satellite? Does it fit downtown? Does it fit, um, a whole other facility? Um, the board's also going to be saying, you know, "We don't have any money, so even though we don't have money, we might have to look at something else." And I think that's part of this as well. The assumption that everything is somehow excluded, I think is a mistake. Again, the board is the one that has the authority to include and exclude. Not me, not Deb Bucie, um, not our facilities director, not the sheriff, it's the board. It's a collective decision. Um, I think there's always room for public input. Lord knows, we have had plenty of public input in the past two weeks. And at the next meeting, or the meeting after, if there's an RFP, rest assured, I think the public will be here. They'll criticize it, they will make suggestions, and someone will be very valid, good suggestions, because I have yet, in, in 16 years on the board, I have yet to see a perfect RFP. They, they don't exist. There are models out there, but there's always room for tweaking and discussion and ideas. So, I, I don't exclude anything from the, the realm of possibility on what we're doing here. I, I will tell you, the sheriff, we are opposite political parties, I'm a defense attorney, I have found him completely open every step of the way, to almost every idea in terms of maximum security, dorm secure, dorm areas, different, being very supportive of, of helping in the gender issues with relationship to education, um, how we screen people, all of that stuff. He's been, he's not just been open, he's suggested much of it. Um, I've been amazed at how open he is to alternative ideas. The other thing, in, in the process of looking at any of these issues, and I can remember when we were in Aurora, Colorado, doing these issues, one of the things we talked about is how you use things like the victim offender, um, restorative program, which we have in this county despite what the audience thinks. How do you use adult diversion and juvenile diversion and station adjustment adjustments, which this county is the leader in, um, those, those areas, and we do reduce jail population rather massively, uh, on those issues. But you do account for that in looking at the future of the jail, future populations, past populations, how you utilize it. That's all part of that assessment process. It does not get overlooked, it cannot be overlooked, because there's no ethical planner that would overlook it. So, the, the assumption, the assumption that I, I hear from the audience is that none of that stuff is going on, and that's very bothersome to me, when I happen to know it takes place in this community on a very regular basis. The other thing, I, I heard 20 million at one point that we're going to spend, and then in the hallway, I heard $30 million. I don't know how people know this, since we have not done the assessment to figure out, um, exactly what we're going to do. And that we're going to sell bed space, so that we can put ICE people in there. The sheriff addressed that I, I don't want the county, and I don't think anyone wants the county in the business of being a landlord, uh, for other counties, and the risks that in, that involve, um, it's, it's very bothersome. I, it, we, we need to be careful. The roundabout was a perfect product of a packed audience, uh, in the process of, um, doing Olympia Drive. It's a perfect product of it, and I don't think anyone, um, in the broader community wants it. Um, but, you know, it does not foreclose listening to people. You know, I, when, when people last week and this week said that jails perform no function, that it just harms people, and it picks on the vulnerable population, and a lot of people in jail definitely are vulnerable. So are the victims. When, when this person got up here and talked about the spouse abuse case, and how horrible it was, he might have lost his job sitting there for five days, and I wonder, I wonder what the spouse thought. She at least had five days of protection. There's more vulnerability than just the person in the jail. And that's hard for me, as a criminal defense attorney, to say that, but there are people who belong in jails. There are people that are very unsafe. You know, one person said, "Julia Reitz can just, with the mandatory minimum sentences, she can just not do it." I am dying to call her up at some point with one of my cases that is a mandatory, "Julia, you can just do that. You can just overturn state law." I'm waiting to have the chutzpah to be able to do that, I don't have the nerve. But, uh, public participation is great when it is at least somewhat informed. Many people are informed, but there was an awful lot of misinformation out there about the sheriff's mixing traffic offenders with murderers. Um, it's possible, I suppose, but I think they'd do a little bit better screening than that, because the liability is so strong. We've had to deal with liability issues in closed meetings at this board, um, in relationship to that. So, if he's regularly mixing folks in that, that are high-risk with real low-risk people, I would be fairly amazed by such an assumption. Um, I needed to talk, because I've listened to this for several weeks, and I think it's been very good, and I think we're going to continue. We are going to continue to have this conversation at this board meeting. I'm going to be off the board, but it's going to continue for the rest of you, for the next five years. Welcome aboard, because this is what you're going to hear. It's just like Olympia Drive, and it's going to be okay. It is absolutely okay to have this process. It's good. It is a good thing, because we're learning stuff every step of the way. But let's, let's keep an objective, that this is about a facilities issue. There is a huge social justice issue that operates in this community, and we have some ability to address it, but we also have that facilities issue. Mr. Rosales.
Oh, I think you asked about, uh, the possibility of the charity-based project committee to, uh, capture maybe Astrid's comment, or, um, the staff members of the federal jail, if you were an attended set of study session. These people have some valuable knowledge things, they certainly could contribute to, um, this, these staff.
I, I would just like to speak to the project team for a moment. This is a, uh, this is the same model that we've used for all of our construction projects since the jail that was built in 1996. Right, well, the jail that was built, actually, the jail that was built in 1996 is a satellite jail, and it's a good facility. Um, the project team has basic responsibility for staff work, not policy decision-making, but to keep the project moving forward. And that's why the recommended team is comprised of staff who are involved and engaged in this project. When it was the nursing home project, it was the nursing home administrator, the facilities director, the county administrator, and the chair of facilities at that time comprised the project team. In this process, in, in the process of working with the consultant to develop the needs assessment, I imagine a very large number of employees who work in the correctional center are going to be interviewed. We did that at the nursing home, they're called working charrettes, and you have two to three-hour sessions where a number of staff people come together to meet with the consultant and talk about all of the issues that are involved. Um, when we get to the, that stage of the process, if there needs to be some other form of engagement from experts or, or the public, that's a decision that the board can make. I just want to be clear, the project team is just to keep the project moving forward, to get the RFP written and get it back to you for your input and for your feedback, to keep things moving in terms of the project itself.
Mr. Rosales.
I just wanted to ask a question of Alan Reinhardt, uh, facility directors. How did we ever get here to this point where the deterioration of the jail has become a major issue, and it hasn't been properly maintained, uh, for several years?
Well, uh, first I'd like to address what you, the issue about being properly maintained, maintained, okay. Um, we have maintained the building the best we could under, with the ability we had and the funds that were available. We have put a new roof on it some time ago. Um, last week, when I did say that, uh, the equipment's 30 years old, well, most of it still is, and we clean it, we fix it, and repair it. What we cannot maintain, which is adding to these conditions, is the fact that in the first five to 10 years, there were multiple hangings and jail breaks from the original design. At that particular time, that's when major modifications were done to the ventilation system, to the lighting system. We welded plates over the windows, we welded screens on the ventilation systems, we blocked the air, we shut off the light, uh, losing our artificial light, we didn't, uh, the, uh, excuse me, losing the natural light, we did not re-increase the artificial lighting, so the lighting is poor, the ventilation is poor, um, and there's no way for me to be able to fix those kind of things. Those are the deficiencies. That's how it gets so bad. You can't, we cannot paint with the type of paint that needs to be used in that facility. There is no exhaust system. They have to, uh, we have to use, uh, multiple air movers, just to try to paint, uh, the shower stalls, or we have to use a very low VOC-type paint, or they're vacating the building. Should a, uh, years ago, if there was a small fire, when they were allowed mattresses or something, or mattress would catch on fire, uh, the fire department would actually have to bring in ventilators to just move all that smoke out of the building, and they would have to take the, the inmates and move them to the outdoor rec, because you just can't, uh, it's just that poor design, with all this stupid, excuse me, all the crazy modifications we had to make over the years to, uh, just keep the building working the best we could.
Are we currently in code violation, according to the state of Illinois?
Not as far as the building's safety, I don't believe. As far as code violations from the sheriff's facilities, I, he would have to answer that question. We are, we are have our building inspected by the fire department, we, you know, uh, we have our annual fire alarm system checks, our sprinkler system checks, so on and so forth, but, uh, as far as city verbanter, uh, building codes, safety codes, we are okay there.
And we're allowed to operate under those conditions?
That is correct.
And the state does not mandate any improvements at this point?
They have not at this time.
Or shut us down because it's hazardous to either the officers or the inmates?
No, they have not.
Okay, and then another question is that I have is, um, not only the maintenance, but is there a maintenance fund to keep the jail in operation? Because I know that last year, you were also talking about the HVAC that we put in?
That is correct, yes.
Put in the blower, and then this year, you were talking about several million dollars to upkeep the rest of the things that we need to get updated?
Yep. The several million dollar, million and a half was the projected numbers that you've seen months ago, uh, which, which will more than likely, well, which will have to be spent sooner or later with the new roof replacement, if we continue with that building, another roof replacement, uh, exterior tucks pointing, and, uh, new boilers, so on and so forth, because everything's 30 years old. Um, so...
And how long would you say, or you predict, that we could operate under these conditions? Current conditions?
As far as the building operation...
Doing nothing to it, the way we have done for years, or just low maintenance? How long do you think that we could exist with what we have?
Well, we can continue to replace major equipment expenditures, boilers, and air handling systems and stuff, uh, and keep the building running, but, uh, I don't know about any other standards.
So, in about five years, supposedly that we do, uh, build a new pod, they would be in those conditions for at least five more years, or however many years it would take to build or rebuild?
Uh, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to stay in those conditions for five years. We could put an aggressive plan together, or even a limited type of plan, and start, um, addressing individual problems. What we cannot do is to, um, completely cut the cell blocks and remove all those, improve, to improve the ventilation, and redesign, uh, that small section, so that there's no longer a threat for them to hang themselves on the, on the, um, ceiling diffusers. Uh, those are serious issues that we cannot correct without major renovation. We can replace a boiler, we can, uh, repair an air handler, we can, uh, replace the coils that are freezing and breaking, and yes, we can cap, keep piecemealing it together for as long as we need to, but that is throwing bad money after bad money with, uh, the efficiency that we're trying to achieve on today's standards.
And with the question that Ms. Michael had regarding our expenses and, uh, budgetary constraints we've had had in the last few years, where we're laying off individuals, and we're downsizing, and we're, you know, taking pay cuts on a lot of the positions that we have on the county, um, how did we determine that we would spend the amount of money that we are projected to spend? Uh, I mean, we really don't know how much it, is it going to cost exactly, but I would imagine it's over 10 million, anywhere from 10 to 20 million. Uh, how did we arrive at that and determine that, in a, in a, in a situation where we're still in debt by the nursing home, and, and we're not coming afloat on that, and there's other expenses that we have on, and, and bonds that we have on the courthouse that we haven't totally paid off? I'm, I'm just kind of wondering, do we have that type of capital to build a new and spend that and then be in hock for the next, I think the last figures that I saw here until 2029?
We don't, we don't have a figure for how much this is going to cost. We don't. That's one of the, one of the things that we do need to find out.
But I, what I, what I also fear is that when we have an, uh, an RFP outside, like Clans and Burns, that all of the issues that were brought to the board, sort of to have a green, uh, water retention instead of the concrete sewerage, that, that was an additional cost, because those ideas were not actually written in the RFPs.
Oh, I totally agree.
So, we want to make sure that when we do an RFP, that all of the input, not only from this board, from the constituents of this board, is also included, because like Carol had indicated, once we're on the train, there's no way of stopping that train. And, and that would also be a financial commitment that I don't think that we're really ready or have gotten out of currently.
Ms. Burksen.
Uh, number three, we're still on number two, it, cost assessment and comparative study of jail space solutions at Satellite Downtown is supposed to be a covered in item two above. So, you know, if the RFP really says, "We want, we're at a willing to stay for..." So, you know, if the RFP really says, we want, we're at a willing to painful, assume cost estimate on the two options, even though it's expensive, it's a lot cheaper than making the wrong decision. I think that would make a lot of the people on the board much happier. We would know what we're in.
Can we focus on the RFP as an issue? Mr. Langenheim, then Mr. Carter.
All I wanted to say was that we're considering the RFP, we're not considering the composition of this committee, we're not considering a heck of a lot of things. We have a problem. We all recognize we have a problem. We cannot come to any, even come nearer to an agreement on what we're going to do about that problem, as witnessed by this discussion. We're suggesting that we bring in an outside consultant to go through it and present alternatives in an orderly manner. Now, that RFP will not go out until this board approves it. So all of these things that you're asking for will be in that RFP, or you won't vote for it. So I think you can count on it reflecting the combined will of the board, if there is such a thing, and I would suggest that we call the question on the consideration of the RFP right now. I'd say, I'll call the question.
Mr. Carter.
What I, I just want to say before we leave here tonight, Tom, Deb, Mr. Pius, I'd be just as kind to you tomorrow, next day, for whatever, without any remorse in my heart. But what I said, I'm not going to take it back, and that's the way I feel. And I don't think I ever sat up here and voted on something that I wouldn't vote on something that I thought that was a need in your district, or whatever your need was. I never made, if I did, let me know. I never made you feel that way. And for some of my board members to come on and think what I said was real...
Now related to the question.
See what I'm saying?
I'm going to let him finish.
See, see, that makes me feel bad right there, that I sat up here and voted for his condition to be good, but that when I say something, it's an insult. This is wrong. It's wrong, it's not democratic, and let me know, let me tell you something, Rick, I'm saying that, and Mr. Jay, I will not have no bad feet, I don't care what you do, because I've got somebody in my board, and if I do that, I'm not going to be blessed, and I know that. So I don't want to have two halves. When I leave here, I don't want to go to another half, and I mean that from my heart. So what I'm saying, I don't have no Mars feeling, and I'll be kind and shake your hand or whatever tomorrow, I mean that, but I'm still hurt when I have people set up here that makes me think that they care something about me and make the comments they do. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Michaels.
Just real quick, clarification, understanding what Mr. Langenheim said, to me, is a, is a little different than what's on the agenda item. It says approval of release of the RFP, and his comment was that...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we use the word development?
Okay, because that...
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Development, okay.
Because that would make a whole lot of difference.
I will recognize someone who's making a point of order, not a point of order, a calling of a question now. Mr. Wyble.
I'm not going to do that yet, because I just want to comment to follow up on what Mr. Rosales says, that as far as maintenance of the jail or any other building, Mr. Jay has been reminding us that we have no really plans to do that, that, you know, that are set in stone. We sort of just piecemeal it, and he's been asking that, well, for many years now that we... Okay, 10, thank you. It's had a fun, and the procedures, and so we have plans to have maintenance on all the buildings. And furthermore, Mr. Allen Staff has been cut by this county board, so that means he has less people to do the things that need to be done. So if you're looking at who to blame, well, you've met them.
Ms. Coer.
For number two, we decided to develop the RFP for consultant services for needs and assessment, cost assessment, and comparative study of the jail space solutions at the Satellite and Downtown Jail. I think that those two should be combined, eliminate pre-design planning, and go with those two together.
Ms. Bucy.
You need the needs assessment first before you can do any kind of analysis or cost assessment of putting the space needs in different facilities, whether it would be to remodel the downtown facility or to build new out at the Satellite facility. That work has to be done by an architectural engineering firm. We are, this RFP is not for architectural engineering services, this is for consultant services, for someone who can help us figure out what the needs are and approximately what kind of space it is that we then need to turn over to an architect engineer at the next step in the process, which would be an RFQ, which is indicated on the report at the end of this agenda, but that, we can't get to that point this soon. And I would also point out that this schedule is as aggressive as it looks because we knew that this board wanted a cost comparison analysis, so this is as fast as you could get to one, and this schedule probably is, it is too aggressive, and in fact, just by what we're doing tonight, we won't be following the dates in this schedule. So we are probably at least a year away from being able to get a cost analysis comparison of whether the space is built, of building the space through a remodel at the current correctional, downtown correctional center, or as new space built at the Satellite facility, or any other option that the board may want to look at.
Why do we have it on here?
What is on here is the RFP to hire the consultant to do the needs assessment and the pre-designed study to talk about how the, based on the needs assessment, the kinds of spaces that you will need and how they should be in relationship to each other.
Now, there's only three people who have not spoke. Most people have spoke twice. Mr. O'Connor hasn't spoke, Mr. Schrader hasn't spoken, Mr. Richards hasn't spoken. Do either of you three wish to have a question or anything before I call the roll? Okay, I want to point out, the reason I did not have the question called is because you have to recognize the person, and the chair chose not to, because I want everyone to have that opportunity to speak, it's too important to cut anyone off, so I want everyone to speak. That being said, there is a motion on the floor to approve the development of an RFP, and I'm going to ask that the clerk call the roll.
So you're not going to split it by, just colored?
No, no. There isn't, there wasn't a motion, so call the roll.
You did not make the motion. She suggested it.
We operate by motion, and there was a motion on the floor. Call the roll.
Carter.
I'm sorry, my mind, call me.
Would I call a vote?
Yes.
No.
Sowars?
No.
Esri?
Yes.
Mulresfield?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langheim?
Yes.
Maxwell?
No.
McGinty?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes, for the development.
O'Connor?
No.
Petry?
No.
Quizemary?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
No.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yes.
Alex? Anderson?
Yes.
Burksen?
Yes.
Bets?
Yes, the motion carries. Now, we're going to go back to item one, and just, just so that you know, normally, since this is not a county board committee or subcommittee that deals with this issue, because the county board members do not have the authority to appoint the prosecuting attorney, the state's attorney, the sheriff, or the judge, or any of these other executive branch officials, we don't have the authority to appoint them to anything. They are willing to serve on this committee, which follows the process that we've used in the past on projects. It is also the model that was recommended by the justice folks that we met with, and we circulated all of that material for all of you to look at throughout the past almost six months now. So I am, that is there essentially for informational purposes. Now, the, I do not have a problem with the idea that this committee absolutely should be listening to the people at the jail, should be listening to social services, people should be listening to all sorts of folks. I think they will. I have not found the folks to be closed. It's not been my experience. I have no vested personal thing here. I mean, I don't want, like, I want to spend the next eight months of my life dealing with jail issues, and I do it all the time in some respects anyway, but that's what that's there for. It is not designed to exclude folks. We don't know who Judge DeFonis might designate as the person that would be his representative. We don't know who Ms. Reitz might appoint. She could appoint someone from her office, she could appoint someone from the community, and that is certainly true of other folks. This is how we have dealt with other issues. It has been very, very successful in the, in the past, at least in terms of these initial steps. Does not mean that at some point we should not really have a jail advisory committee. I think that's part of the strategy that you see in the NIC report, is at some point you have to do that. We're not at that point, not in my opinion, and not in the opinion of the folks that have dealt with this issue all over the country over and over again. Item three is the cost assessment. It is on the agenda because I told folks I would put it on the agenda last week. I believe you will get some results after you get your assessment on that issue. The fourth issue is garnering together impactors in social justice system to present information regarding improvements, implementation, and jailing communities report. It's not, that is really not necessarily entirely within the facilities. It seems to me that justice and social services absolutely should be compiling a list of all the things that we provide in this community in terms of pre-trial diversion, juvenile justice diversion, our quarter set money, all of that should be compiled together, all of the things that we do to both prevent people from being in facilities, prevent crime, and prevent recidivism. I think that it would be good to have that information and how successful it has been, you know, the pre-trial diversion program, how many people are in pre-trial diversion per year, and how many have successfully completed without going to jail. That's information I think that is fairly easily available, but it would be very valuable information because from that point, then you can in fact analyze, can you use it more effectively? Are there some things that you could do better? And there's no one that doesn't want improvement. And will it have an impact on jails? Possibly, definitely, and that's good information to know. But I really absolutely believe Mr. Richards' committee, as it was done in the past with the jury issue, is a perfect use of the justice and social services committee to start gathering, and I know that Michael's interested in doing it. If you would speak to that, Mr. Richards.
That is correct. I think most everybody got an email from Tom today. I am interested in, and Pius hasn't said he would block it from the agenda for next week, I have not spoken with Ms. Bucy, but I am interested in talking about this subject, and at least having it on the agenda for this county board to decide if they want to have some sort of commissioner task force relating to these issues under the banner of justice and social services.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Yes, Mr. James.
Every time I hear we have a justice committee or this, isn't it the committee of the whole?
Sure it is.
Okay, well, I didn't get an email, Diane didn't get an email.
This was within my caucus, maybe I...
Of course, I didn't check mine for two days, but I just like...
Ms. Petry.
Thank you, Chair Bets. I was the one who asked for this to be on the agenda, and I just want to thank Mr. Richards for his willingness to put it on the social justice agenda at the next county meeting, and I do hope that there might be some collaboration between social justice and Ms. Ammons as chair of policy on working through developing some sort of task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richards.
Yes. Let me just expand on my comments a little bit for the general public and for anybody who didn't talk with Mr. Bets about this. So we have, Ms. Bucy, is this right, court services coming next week? Court services already planned. I have spoken with the sheriff and the state's attorney about possibly coming in future months to talk about some of the issues that came up the 31st, that they're all, that they're already doing in relation to this project, especially with some of the social services projects they're working on, and some of the programs they have to keep people outside of jail, and that's, neither one of those is written in stone, but they were both receptive to that and seem like they want to do that. And in relation to what Mr. Bets was talking about and what I agree with, we're talking about having an agenda item which the county board, yeah, the committee of the whole, not specifically justice or me, it will take a majority of votes, to talk about more policy-related issues having to do with this than specifically the building, such, mainly talking about some of the programs that we're already doing, thinking, and thinking about how that plays in, such as the reconciliation programs that Tom's been talking about, adult diversion, juvenile diversion, mental court, drug court, court services. What, yes, talking, basically what justice has already been doing this year in this term with the committee of the whole, trying to bring in something, this would be more comprehensive, I think, than people would just want to do during the allotted time for that under committee of the whole, to have a commission to, to better come up with something so that the general public and everybody on the county board has a better picture about what we already are and are not doing, and what we are currently utilizing our current facilities for, so that we are more informed going forward. And if this gets a majority next week, however that's formed, we can go forward with something like that. If not, it won't.
Mr. Alex.
I mentioned earlier that I wanted to focus on the difference between the facilities side of this and the justice side of this, and it's been difficult because I recognize that at the last study session last week and at the meeting tonight, nobody came here from the public to talk about what color the walls should be in the new jail. I mean, people are here to talk about what are honestly fundamental questions of social justice, and I've heard very few people on the county board or among the sheriff and state's attorney or their staff who are opposed to that. I mean, who doesn't want to consider alternatives to incarceration? Who would say, no, we shouldn't try to make the criminal justice system more fair, identify ways to reduce crime in the community, or look at how we're allocating our resources in that regard? I think there are members on, of the board, I certainly would put myself in this group, that are concerned about issues like racial disparities and sentencing, that do have reservations about the county's participation in the secure communities program. Again, the county board doesn't sentence people, and the county board doesn't, you know, doesn't block up immigrants, but these are things that are happening in the county that I think their members have concerns about. I think there's bipartisan concern on the board about whether the relatively modest funding we're already providing for social services is being spent effectively and is being adequately accounted for, not to go into depth, but I know we've had that discussion in the past. I think, the comment I think we really need to focus on, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Dolaner both made the point, which I think is very good and ties it back into the facilities issue, that the, these issues of justice have implications on the jail space issue and vice versa. An example I'd like to bring up, I think it was Mr. Dolaner mentioned, minimum security versus maximum security. I mean, one thing that I think the county could be doing more of is we're not really doing much in the way of work release, part-time incarceration, essentially it allows people to serve their sentence and also be employed in the community, and frankly, the biggest reason for that isn't that the sheriff doesn't want to do it, it's because... it's because we don't, it doesn't really work with the facilities that we have. So, I know the sheriff's open to considering in the, looking at the jail space issue, looking at the possibility of dormitory-type incarceration, looking at work release-type facilities. Again, that's something where if the will is there in the community to implement the program, you really have to have the facility to do it, and the two have to go hand in hand. So, I mean, Mr. Cruz, last, at the study session suggested a task force, I think he brought it up again tonight, I think the justice committee is the appropriate jurisdiction to move that forward, and I would like to see it happen, I'd be advocate this way. It might be premature to take it up next week, I don't know, I would like, I would hate to see something like that get thrown together. I'd like to see it be something that's given enough consideration that it can be done right. So, I'm not going to be screaming if it doesn't happen next week, but I mean, I think it is something that we need to do, and we need to do it in a timely enough fashion that it can inform the jail space issue and vice versa.
Dan.
I like the idea, and it, you know, next week may be quick, but at least to get started. And in listening to public participation, particularly last week, and have gotten some emails suggesting that, you know, should read about the wonderful program in Minnesota on restorative justice, as if we don't have anything going on here, maybe we could consider in some way even some kind of listing of the things that are happening, maybe not in detail, for our website so the public could be more informed about some actual programs. That doesn't mean they couldn't be expanded if the funds are there, but they could be aware of it and, and maybe, you know, then be willing to explore what's happening a little on their own to see, because it sounded to me almost as if a number of the people thought we weren't doing anything as far as alternatives, and I think we are doing some things. We heard from the parenting with love and justice, you know, some of our quarter cent monies go in into that. Was that just last month or two months ago? Which is really a start on this already.
Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. I haven't said a lot this evening. I've been absorbing some of the very, very good comments from both sides. But listening to the public, it sounded as if they were misinformed on a lot of factual points. I've sat in on mental health board, I've gone to graduation through drug court, I've seen what the diversion programs can do, and the numbers speak for themselves. Over the last 10 years, we have reduced incarcerations by thousands of inmates. We're looking at successful programs, probably the leader in the state in diversion programs that have helped both white and people of color, Hispanics and African Americans. If you look down the drug court list of the last drug court graduation, I would say 80% of those drug court graduates were African American or Hispanic. These are felons who would still be in our jail system if it wasn't for this type of a program and the other programs that we have. Now, can they be improved? Can they be expanded? I hope so, because they've helped a lot of these people. And I want to congratulate those in the state's attorney's office, in the public defender's office, in the sheriff's department, for working hard and diligently to try and reduce the inmate population. Nobody wants to see people go to jail unless they deserve to go to jail. And so, if we can help more and more of these people to get back on the right track and become useful citizens in our community, as over 100 drug court graduates have become, to me, that shows the progress in this county. And we are talking about a facility, but we're not necessarily talking about expanding this facility. I talked with Ms. Anderson recently, and I said, why is everybody talking about expanding? We're talking about replacing a facility that's falling apart so that we can have a more efficient business. We can have the sheriff out at perhaps the Satellite Jail, if that's where we're going to go with this. But it's so inefficient right now, unsafe. Now, I've been through all of the Satellite jails, I've been through the downtown jail, I've been through the juvenile detention center. These people care about what's going on there from both sides. And I care. I care that there are more African Americans than the percentage that live in this community in our jails. And that's why we have these programs, to try and straighten them out, help them. Love Without Limits is a phenomenal program that has been running here now in our community, helping tired families put their children back on a track of being a useful citizen in our community. And so, we need to look at all the aspects of our juvenile and adult justice system from every aspect that we can, from facilities, from justice. And I feel this is an extremely important discussion, and we shouldn't short-shift it, we should take the time that it takes for us to find all the options necessary for us to have a better justice system in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richards, for taking on a really big project. I think it's going to be fascinating and interesting for this county to learn about it and discover potentials to make it even better. That being said, we're now on item five because people requested that there be some sort of funding model, which in my view is probably very, very primitive work, but it was requested, and so I put things on the agenda when people request it. If people want to take it on tonight, we can. I don't think it's going to be terribly useful because we don't have a facility, but a plan, but it's up to the board. Mr. Wyble.
I suggest some other time.
Make a motion.
I, well, I move that we adjourn the meeting as soon as possible. I guess I would care to that, but I would suggest that this item be put on the agenda in a month or two.
All those in favor of adjournment, signify by missing eye. Those opposed? We're adjourned.